Agenda review. Anybody need to move anything on the agenda for any reason? Healthcare cola, replace the police cruiser. Okay, you good with where everything's at?
Yep.
John's got his hand up.
John's got his hand up. This is agenda review.
Just want everybody to remember that Saturday at 11:00 a.m., the Veterans Audit Committee is having service at Perkinsville Green. At 11:00 a.m. at 11:00 a.m.
I wasn't hearing that, but thank you. I was under a general review at the moment. Can you hear us?
Yes, not.
Yeah, I don't think he can hear us.
John, can you hear us?
I think it's speakers on his computer.
I tested this with Amy earlier.
We don't have anybody else on.
Dave, what's his number? Actually, I think I've got him in here.
Two nine one eight oh five eight seven.
Do you want me to call him upstairs?
Yeah, I got it right here. I've got it. I've got it right here.
He won't answer it.
Can you see me?
It looks like he's frozen.
Calling you.
It's been like five minutes.
Yeah, he's frozen.
Something wrong with his connection.
Yep.
You're gonna have to go upstairs.
That's his home phone. He's not answering.
Can you hear me? I can hear you. The connections, I can hear back and forth. It's all set.
Okay. I don't know if he can see us either. Now, he seems to be frozen. November 11th, 2023. I'm sorry?
I would just, the issue's not on our end.
Okay. Veterans Day Ceremony, November 11th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park in Perkinsville. Gerald Malloy will be giving a speech at this ceremony this year. The public is invited to join us in honoring our military veterans at the Weathersfield Veterans Memorial Committee's annual Veterans Day Ceremony, as I stated, November 11th, 2023, 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park in Perkinsville. Any comments from the Select Board Town Manager or Citizens topics not on the agenda? Anyone? Dave?
I don't know if anybody's noticed this. Probably about two years ago, the Board and Brandon and I had asked the broadband providers about what they were doing and how they intended to do anything. And we have four of them, which is difficult for the town. Over the last year, TDS had responded saying that they were going to embark on a major upgrade. And I know that I've spoken with John about this, John Arson. And he said that they had been working their way through Cavendish and Ludlow and so forth. Well, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but about a month or two ago, there were, and bear in mind that none of these companies, whether it's TDS, Comcast, First Light, or Vermont Telephone, they don't, none of them own and operate their own capable installing systems. They hire that out to contractors. Well, all through Perkinsville lately, in the last month, so about a couple of months ago, there were great big trucks with wire coils. I know they were going all over the village. And I don't know TDS' territory, and I'm sure that we'll have to get together to ask them what the geography is of TDS. Laying new lines and putting them up on the poles. Well, over the last week, they are now finishing that, and they are going, they're upgrading from transformer to transformer all through the village. I mean, these guys that are doing this are working, they're there now. They're at night. I don't know why or how, but they're actively really going full speed ahead with now installing it to the homes about raising their speed of TDS fiber, and it's fiber. So, I know that we've taken some heat here before about why we could've, should've, would've done something different or whatever, and ARPA-FONS, and where does it go, and we don't know, and everything. Well, I know that Vermont Telephone has built up Wellwood Orchard Roads, fully up to the top, near the orchard. I know that they've built up Gerdlot Road. Things are happening in a positive direction with broadband right now. So, I don't know exactly where, so I'm seeing some comments up on social media about, great, tell me when it's gonna come to Green Bush, which is a village, and so forth. I don't know where the layout of TDS is, and that's probably important to ask them about where their road network is. But at least it's a big, I know today they were going up Katy Hill Road. They'd already gone around Reservoir Road. They were out on Little Scottney Lottery Lane. They were down on Upper Falls. They're all over the village. So, if you see those trucks, they're little like vans, and they got high-rise lifts and everything. That's what's going on. That's it for me.
Anybody else? Members of the Board? Members of the public? John might have. He was there, but he's gone now. Brendan, anything for you?
I can wait to my report.
Okay. Review minutes from the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 10:16, 2023? I also want to note that this agenda does not include the 10:02 minutes that were continued to this meeting.
Yes, they'll be on the 11:20 agenda. They were left out, and the Recording Secretary did contact me, but I had already released the agenda and posted it.
Okay, so we will just be dealing with the 10:16, 2023 minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those with corrections if necessary?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion on the minutes?
Is this the 10:60? So, 10:02 is the minutes that I had a question about, or is it not?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. I'm all set. I have not been contacted about that either, so I'm just, the minutes are what they are. We've had that talk before where you can't change them. It's just a document trying to explain what went on during the meeting. That's as simple as that.
Exactly. And in these minutes, page three of 124, which is your, the little highlighted number that comes up, section four in the minutes, go to that next page after that, which is three of 124. Right in that first sentence, it says, "The Select Board alerted the online public that the project was not working." That should be the projector, I believe?
Yes. So, then if you go to the very end, it's something I just picked up because I was ready to get on to the next thing, but I'm not sure that we are, so when you look at the signing page, no, wait a minute. Yeah, the very last page, so it's 11 out of 124, it says, "The Weathersfield Select Boar." I'm not sure I've ever seen that before, okay? Now I'm rhyming.
I did have one that may come into what you were just. I have section seven, healthcare analysis.
My name is spelt wrong, too.
Healthcare analysis, which is seven, also page three of 124. You see where it goes into the analysis. You got the highlighted Select Board packet. Below that is the analysis. Go to the end of the analysis, which is the next page, and then you see three paragraphs. In the third paragraph, it says, "The Select Board discussed that once an insurance carrier is chosen, that the town should stick with that carrier for a few minutes." Dave, I thought you made that as a statement. Mr. Fuller made a statement, this is what I wrote down. Mr. Fuller made a statement that recommended the Board take this up for discussion and consideration.
Yes.
Is that more accurate?
Yes. Yes.
Because we didn't actually discuss it, I didn't think. Anyway, and that's all I have for, that's all I had for corrections to the minutes for myself, and then what Dave said on being bored, or bored, or bore, whatever. So, any further discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, they need to, she needs to fix my name on when I make the motions. It's spelt with an A, but it should be an E, but it's right on the signature page. On page 10 of 24. I made a motion to accept the warrant. It's spelled B-R-I-A-N. It should be E-N. And the same on the next page down, on the page that we signed my name. It's spelt wrong.
Yep. Okay. We got all those?
I'm trying, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. Yeah, it's good. It's correct on the signature page.
Yeah, just in the motions there.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Janice, 2024 healthcare. Brendan, I think that's you.
Has everyone had the opportunity to review the analysis at this point?
Yes.
Is everyone comfortable with the recommendation? Would you like to discuss that further?
Anybody? Does everybody understand the recommendation? There's actually two of them, correct?
Two motions.
Two recommendations would require two motions, yes.
Yeah, I'd probably just make recommendation recommendations for historical record.
Sorry.
So, we have to change from MVP to Blue Cross Blue Shield in 2024 and offer the Blue Cross Blue Shield Gold CDHP Plan to the employees with an 86% employer, 14% employee contribution share. There is no change in the contribution share. This is just, that particular motion is only to change from MVP to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I didn't know if you wanted me to read the motion, but I guess you.
Go ahead.
Motion to offer the BCBS Gold CDHP Plan in 2024 to employees with an 86% employer, 14% employee contribution share.
Do I hear a second?
I seconded.
Motion's been made in seconded. Discussion, any discussion on the motion? Anybody out in the audience? I know we've got a couple of employees here. Did you guys come to talk about this or ask questions about it by any chance? Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
I, you know, I wasn't here this weekend, so I have not had a chance to read through this. The statement in my minutes from the previous, I mean, yeah, my position in the minutes of the other meeting is what I'm trying, what I would trying to do is put myself in the position of having to change carriers. And I did not feel that it was productive to leapfrog from something to something because what I've learned over the years is there's a definite difference in the words located in the policies that happen. MVP did that a year ago when they first came out, or somebody here in the office said, "No, the rates aren't raised," or something, and then all of a sudden, the plan was not the same thing. So, it did affect what was going on. So, but I haven't had a chance to look at this. I trust Blue Cross. I've had Blue Cross for years with candy teaching. That's what the school gets. One question that I have would be, so, obviously, it's not just the highway that's affected or builds here. Has the, all the employees that involve in healthcare met as a group to gone over this?
Yes.
Okay. And were there any questions that to be considered or not considered for us to listen to or not? That's all been resolved?
There were questions that were asked and answered, and we had discussion. I don't think I had anybody object to the recommendation.
Has, so all, whoever that was there has had a chance to look at this, what plan fits them, or?
Yes.
Okay.
In the analysis that you did, the deductibles, out-of-pocket costs, any shared cost, anything that would be passed on, was there anything that stood out as being something that would end up landing in the employees' lap? I guess what I'm getting at is in a simpler way is, are the plans similar? Or is there a big change between, I mean, if we went with MVP this year over Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, if you take those two plans and you overlap them, are they the same coverage, better coverage?
Yeah, the deductibles are lower, and the cost of the plan is lower for the employee this year and the town. So, there's a pretty significant cost savings by making this change, whereas there wasn't in previous years.
And that savings is also, that savings is also passed on, the way the plan works, to the employee?
To the employee and the employer. So, there's a, this is a pretty significant savings for both of us, both the employer and employee to make this change.
I just want to make sure there are, I think Dave's point is there aren't any surprises. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, you're right on the money.
Within the plan, that, you know, somebody goes to get help with something in their healthcare, and next thing you know, they get to all, no, that's not covered, and you gotta pay this, and you gotta pay that.
Yes, you're right on the money. You're taking the question.
And significant analysis took place.
Okay. Good.
And that analysis is here in this packet.
And that's what I understood when I, as I went over that stuff.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, the packet was very clear.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
So, when you say significant savings, though,
Yep.
the savings would only occur if we continue with MVP and they raise their prices by 14-4, right? So, when you say savings, we're really spending more money than we did a year ago. It's just.
No, I think there's, if I can't bring, from what I understood, there's more savings than that, Dave, because the deductibles actually went down as well, which is less out-of-pocket money for somebody using the plan.
Well, I'm specifically concerned with the town now because we're gonna go through the budget process here. So, I don't know Blue Cross's rates because I haven't really looked at that closely. So, I think when you're, when you're, when you said just a minute ago, there's considerable savings for the town, and there's considerable savings for the employees.
Yeah.
But, so, I don't know how much the town spends. Doesn't the town spend $300,000 in healthcare? And so, I don't know what it'll be for '24, '25. Probably you got that here somewhere. I haven't found it.
I do have that in the analysis. If you go to page three, the top chart. We currently spend $259,782.
Where are you at?
Page.
On the whole, on the whole parcel?
Seventeen in the packet, okay.
Seventeen, good.
Seventeen in the packet.
Good.
So, that's our existing situation. If we stayed with MVP, let's see here. So, the total cost to the town moving forward from 2020, if you go to page 23 in the packet now, going forward with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we will spend $274,702. And that's compared to $282,000 with MVP. So, there is a $15,000 increase this year.
So, but take that back to what this year's total outlay for healthcare would be, which was $259. Is that back on page three or whatever it was?
Yeah.
So, we're actually up.
Yeah, we're up $15,000, but we would be up $23,000.
No, no, and that's where I wanted to be. I wanted to know. That's all I wanted to know.
That's kind of how it shakes out.
Yep. We're up, but not as much as it would if we stayed where we were. Right.
And the employees are up as well. We're up, we're up than last year. We're still, we're paying 14% extra.
Correct, correct. But, but if we stayed, I think if we stayed with MVP, you would be up. You'd be up even more.
Correct.
That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify that we are all paying.
Well, yes.
Both sides.
Or you can look at it the way Brendan said it. We're all saving more.
Correct.
And then, Dave, if you go to page 28 of the packet, that, I think that gives you the overview that you're looking for in those two tables there. The first table is showing 2023 to 2024 health insurance, MVP to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then it's showing, the next one would be 2024 MVP versus 2024 Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, those are the two. So, in other words, in 2024, MVP would cost $285,000. 2024 Blue Cross Blue Shield would cost $275,000.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to add, I want to thank, on behalf of myself, I'm not going to speak for these guys, but I want to say thank you, Brendan, for this report. We received this two weeks ago.
Yep.
Plus, we had a meeting in the past. We received this information. Like tonight, we're trying to figure it out with you folks, and this is a huge asset, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for what y'all do.
It makes it a lot nicer because insurance can be scary.
Mm-hmm. Is that, any further discussion on the motion?
So, before we, this is gonna pass, but before we pass this, this can move. So, maybe we should pass the motion, but then ask how that's gonna, how we're gonna.
Move how?
Well, it can move internally. I mean, if someone goes from a single to getting married, it moves. And so, even though, even though these lines are what they are, and say that the dollar amount is X, it can move.
I'm glad you brought that up. That's a good point, but it can move in another way, too, Dave. In fact, it does every year. Because we vote on this based on our fiscal year, and this happens based on an annual budget. And we're leaving six months out of the next, the next budget. So, I'd like to, I think we should take that up as a discussion on how we can supplement that in the budget, but separate from this. Does that make sense, Dave?
Yeah, but I, no one.
We have to take care of both of those things.
Once this plan is enacted and voted on, irregardless of whatever, any other financial decisions made, the Town Manager would have to fit it in somewhere where there's a change internally with the healthcare.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Anywhere.
And I think what you're talking about is, let's say, an employee left, another employee came, and it went from a single healthcare to a full family healthcare. Cost goes up. Or we add an employee. That's another, or somebody else comes on the plan. However that works, that increases the cost. But we've also got that six months hanging out there, that we've got to address that. And that's what I'm coming, talking to you about is, is there a way we can address that? That would happen, those things will both happen regardless of whether we change to Blue Cross Blue Shield or stay with MVP.
Right, doesn't matter.
So, those are things we have to address. But this is, this motion changes us to Blue Cross Blue Shield, locks us into Blue Cross Blue Shield with the employee contributions set. And that's pretty much it. The budget's gonna shake out. There will be changes. We're gonna, you're right, Dave. There's changes we're gonna see, or could see.
Yeah, and changes could happen at any time throughout the year. When people get married or divorced, plans change. Or when people leave and new employees are hired, plans change. The only thing that we can control is, we know that Blue Cross Blue Shield is less for all plans this year. So, this recommendation moves us to that plan, knowing that we could have fluctuation at any time.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 And the second motion is, where is it, Brendan?
Back to the beginning.
Cola.
Same page, 28 of 124.
28, there it is. To offer an HSA to employees with an 86% employer contribution and a 14% employee share of the deductible for all plans. That one's gonna go into discussion as well. Do I hear a motion to make that?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Brendan, you want to explain this?
Yeah, so in the past, we set an HSA based on what the deductible was, but there wasn't a formula for calculating the HSA. What this does is makes that consistent with the employee contribution of the plan cost and makes the deductible consistent with that, same exact ratio, which is 86-14.
Okay. So, when this discussion started with Brendan and I about HSAs, and this led to pretty much the whole study that was done, the discussion was about getting rid of the HSA. Well, I learned some stuff, and that sometimes happens. It wasn't gonna save us any money. And I had also said to Brendan, you know, regardless of which way it goes, for a couple thousand dollars, let's not upset the apple cart. So, as it turns out, the HSAs save us money. The other thing I was looking at here was the amount of money that a family pays, which could be just, it could, anything above a single plan is basically considered a family, if you will, for the HSA. A single person was basically responsible for about $200 on an HSA, and families were, what was it, around 1,600, 1,700?
I believe so.
That, that, that families were getting hit for. Families cost a lot more money to run to start with. In my mind, I thought, well, how about if we went up a couple hundred dollars for the singles and down a few hundred dollars for the families? Brendan did this formula, and it kind of worked. In fact, families went down 600, and the singles went up 200. So, a single person will pay more, $200. There's five of them in our plan that'll be responsible for about $200 more of their deductible cost. Families will see a $600 decrease in their family deductible cost. So, for me, I thought that was, I thought that was pretty good. I mean, I think that helps our families and our employees. I know it's a hit to the singles. That's my take on it. I'll open the floor for discussion. You want to go first?
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
For me, what was important is fairness. And there wasn't, there was a difference between the percentage that singles were paying and the percentage that families were paying. So, what this did was make it consistent and make it fair.
I was making it hard. He made it easy. Open the floor to discussion. Dave?
How does the, how does the HSA compare from the last year, which is MVP, to this year, Blue Cross Blue Shield? What is the total amount of the HSA that you're talking about? Because the total amount a year ago was something like $5,000 for everybody, or something like that, on January 1st. So, the beginning, remember, we got to figure out that this is not a budget year, it's a calendar year.
Yeah, so if you go to page 27 of the packet, you'll see a blue chart, Table 21.
Yep.
And on the left chart in light blue, it shows 2023 MVP with HSA. The HSA amount was 5,000 for families, 3,000 for singles. The deductible is 6,400 for families, 3,200 for singles. Employee share of the deductible is 1,400 for families, 200 for singles. In the dark blue, and you can also see there how it was unequal between singles and employee-plus plans, whereas families were paying 22% of the deductible, and singles were paying 6%. In the next chart, in darker blue, the deductible is 5,700 this year. So, it did go down, and it's 2850 for singles. And then the employee, and employer shares are 14%, 8%, 14% and 86%. The HSA amount also decreases considering the percentage of the deductible. So, for families, it went from 5,000 to 4902, and then for singles, it went from 3,000 to 2451.
Next question. Have, when you got in the Have, when you got in the discussion, um, the first motion, to, with all the employees, have all the employees seen this compensation piece about the HSAs?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um. I know in the past that we've had discussions about the HSAs, and they're paid generally the first week of January. It's a pretty, you know, it's a pretty, when you see the payroll and, and the warrants, you know, it's, it's noticeable when you see five thousand dollars about thirteen times when we're signing that first warrant on the first meeting of January.
Yep.
We've had discussion about what happens if somebody leaves during the year, that money's gone. Um, have you thought about a way to navigate through that fairly for the town? Or, I mean, somebody, let's say that Dave Fuller works for the town, on January third, I get a check for, I'm not single, but I'm double. So I, I don't know the amount of money, let's say three thou- let's just make a story of three thousand dollars, right, you give me a check. I give you my two-week notice on January thirtieth saying, I got a new job somewhere. The way things are right now, I get to keep that three thousand dollars.
Correct.
Yep. I, I know we've talked about this in the past, and I don't know how to navigate your way through that, um, whether or not this is done quarterly, or whether or not, I, I don't know the answer, I'm asking.
So I wouldn't recommend that we split it up, basically because you, we can't control when employees have medical issues. So I think it needs to go in a lump sum on January first, in order to adequately cover everybody at any time throughout their employment, throughout the year. I think that I can look into ways, and it doesn't have to be before this decision is made, to where. Either we write it in policy, I have to talk to council to determine whether this is, this can be done legally. But we could say that if you leave, you know, throughout the year, then a portion of the HSA, based on the time that you leave, needs to be repaid.
I know, I just, I know we've talked about that before.
Then you get, then you get in the conversation, well, if they had a huge medical bill, where they already spent the money on medical stuff.
Yeah. I know, I don't know the answer, I don't know the answer.
So, like, in, in contracts that the town has entered into in the past, where there was like. You know, an, an amount of money that was paid for the contract, if the contract stops fifty percent through, then fifty percent of the money has to be repaid. Um. It was legal for other contracts, I don't see why this wouldn't also be legal, um, but I need to get further.
Dave, do you recall how long ago it was we made that change, 'cause it wasn't that long ago?
Changed to what?
To upfront loading that a hundred percent like we do. 'Cause it wasn't like that long.
I don't thi- we haven't had the HSAs too terribly long. I mean, it, it, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't, you know, I don't know, maybe some people that have been here for a really long time can say how long, but.
I'm thinking it was under Ed Morris that, that that happened.
I don't know.
We had them in the past, and then they ran away, and then we got them back.
No, I don't mean the HSAs had them or have not, I mean.
HSAs are always loaded for your first of the year, that's how they're set up.
It's, it's always been that way?
Yeah, it's, it's way.
Oh, there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any change in when the payment has been made.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was, it, it was, it was split up, and then under, like Ed Morris, that we, we voted to make that.
I don't.
All front-loaded, or maybe it was just the amount, Wendy?
So, um, have there been issues in the past that I don't know about, that where somebody has left early on? Because outside of that, I, I kind of agree with the fact that a medical, you, you could, February, um, you could have a medical issue. And I don't know why we would re, why we, we would be seeking to.
Well, the whole thought behind an HSA is to get way more than just the deductible in that account for you to use for your healthcare, no matter what. So it's not, it's not, it's not every time, um, something comes up that that will be empty. Um, there are times that it does, but, but the thought behind the whole concept of HSA is that you end up with a lot more in there than the deduct, what happens to be the deductible. What we can't control here is how the plans change their deductible. So, I mean, over at the school, I'm pretty sure that the deductible is eight hundred dollars, they don't have an HSA. But if they did, and they were paying us three thousand dollars under an HSA, well, then I meet the deductible all the time, I don't go to the doctor. But, I, I'm just saying that we, depending on the deductible of the plan, is when you would use all that HSA money up. Uh, so you must have considered what type of plans to be used with a deductible or not here, right?
Yes.
When you went and researched either MVP or Blue Cross.
Yes.
I don't know, the school has, I don't, because they, I think they, they lobby, maybe Kelly, you know this, they lobby with the whole WSSU.
Or, or their rate?
No, for Blue Cross, I mean, they have a much bigger.
We have a pool.
Yep.
For all the schools in the whole state of Vermont. That's where we get our lower rate from.
Right.
But our HSA, we, we don't, I don't know if that's what you call it or not, but our deductible.
Yes.
We don't get anything in a lump sum, but we do get, like, I don't have any out of pocket at all.
Yep.
But my bills go to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they do the whole thing. We, we never get an upfront pot, even though we have it, but we don't actually see that money, it just stays. Someone at the school or Blue Cross takes care of it, we don't.
I considered moving to an HRA this year.
What does that stand for?
It's a health reimbursement account.
Oh.
And what that does is, the town holds the money, and then when bills come in, we reimburse those bills, the employee has to pay them first, and then we reimburse the employee. That takes a lot of bookkeeping work, and it's in.
And also it's burned out on, on the employees.
We never have to pay upfront.
Okay.
Everything comes, we never have to pay anything out of pocket.
And even in the case that we could arrange it in a way where nothing gets paid out of pocket, it would still add an additional amount of work, like. The town's small, whereas the supervisor, uh, the school is much larger and has more staff.
Right.
Uh, and we calculated it out, it would potentially be a, potentially a twelve thousand dollar savings, but then an increase in labor.
Administration.
So it just kinda.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna get into, we're getting too deep into it now, but, so on the green, on page twenty-seven, still, uh, uh, you showed us the blue chart. Is the green chart now, um, the total cost, um, add, if you look at that last thing, is twenty-four fifty-one? Is that be, be, the result of the HSA differences?
Uh, it's actually, there's a two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollar savings between if we went with MVP or Blue Cross Blue Shield, because their deductible's higher.
Okay.
Um, so we're saving twenty-four fifty-one there is, is what that chart shows between the HSAs for the two providers.
And, and one last thing, I just wanna be clear about this, I mean, you keep using the word saving, we're spending, we're just spending less.
Yes, that is correct.
Good, but, but I wanna go, you know, but twenty-four budget, twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-three, twenty-four. This is costing us more money, I mean, I, you know, it's an area that we need to add up, and when it, when we get down to it, um, I'm not sure how that's gonna all work out, but.
It's costing us more money, but not as much as it would have.
That's exactly right, yes, yes. Call the question.
Um, well, take that back.
Or is it, is it, is there?
So I don't have to deal with that motion.
Is it, is it?
Well, just, I'll call.
No, no, is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion.
Okay, okay. Well, we got a lot to talk about in the meeting, and I'm.
So there is a motion on the floor, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, yes. Um, and healthcare is done for this year, just like that. Yes. Thank you everyone for helping with this, Brendan, the work you did on this. Uh, and I believe next is the COLA, cost of living increase. Uh, Brandon, you wanna go over this?
Yep, I'm gonna be short and sweet. Um, the cost of living adjustment is three point two percent in twenty twenty-four. Um, there's a small chart there that s- shows increases from one percent to three point two percent, and what the total cost would be for the town. Um, if you flip the page and go to the chart on page thirty-one of your packet. Overall, we spend six hundred and sixteen thousand in the general fund on wages, three hundred and seventy-three thousand in the highway fund, fifty-three thousand in the solid waste fund. For a grand total of a million forty-four thousand, um, across all three. Um, total FICA is seventy-nine thousand, because as you increase wages, other things also increase, like FICA, retirement, workers' comp, and unemployment. Um, so we spend seventy-nine, round off to eighty thousand in FICA, sixty-one thousand in retirement, eighty-five thousand in workers' compensation, and fifty-six hundred in unemployment. The total, like, indirect costs are a hundred and forty-one thousand outside of wages. Um, so, in the first column, you can see that if we gave a one percent raise, or a one percent cost of limit adjustment, if you go all the way down to the bottom. That area highlighted in blue is the total cost to the town. So for one percent, it will cost twelve thousand five hundred, one point five percent will be eighteen thousand nine hundred, two percent is twenty-five thousand, two point five percent is thirty-one thousand, three percent is thirty-eight thousand. And then three point two percent is forty thousand for all funds with all indirect costs built in.
Okay. Dave, when you came in, August was sitting in your seat, I was asking him a question, and my question was this. If the cost of living, and, and, uh, August can give his answer. Uh, if the cost of living is three point two percent, and we raised tax need by four percent. Does that exceed the three point two percent that a fixed income individual living in town would have?
No.
Can you explain that, please?
So, the way that this works is, if. A person that's on social security gets a three percent increase in wages, uh, well, in social security. So let's say the person is receiving twenty-five hundred dollars per month, um, and then they get a three point two percent increase, so that would be eighty dollars per month.
And I'll just note that the social security increase is exactly three point two percent.
Correct, that's correct, yeah, I, I was gonna do that too, but I think he was just using it as a.
Example.
Yeah.
So if, if I'm on social security and I, I receive twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and I get a three point two percent increase, I'm gonna get eighty dollars per month. You multiply that by twelve, that's nine hundred and sixty dollars per year that I'm gonna get additional. When you raise the tax need for the town by forty thousand dollars, I think it equates to, I'll, I, I have to look back, but on a hundred thousand dollar house, I think it's eight bucks. So for every penny that you increase the tax rate, which is thirty-three thousand dollars, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, I believe it's eight dollars that your taxes would increase on that house per hundred thousand. So if you have a three hundred thousand dollar house, and you increase taxes by thirty-three thousand dollars, you're gonna pay twenty-four bucks. So if I'm on social security and I have a three hundred thousand dollar house, and then I pay eight, sixteen, twenty-four more dollars, and I gain nine hundred and sixty dollars on social security. I'm gonna pay nine hundred and forty-six dollars, I'm still gaining nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
And, and that, that's what I wanted you to, to prove, any discussion?
Yes, here's where I respond to that. You're assuming, I don't, I can't tell you someone that's getting twenty-five hundred dollars a month in, in, uh, social security right now.
I see.
I get two seventy. Start doing the math on a lot lower numbers. Second, um, we just raised right now, separate from this, t- t- according to my math that I got from you, seventeen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars out of pocket, right from the town, right get, from the get-go, under healthcare costs. So while the cost of living and the labor is one thing, you need to, you need to keep this in line with totality of what may or may not happen. So.
So like.
Thirty, thirty-four thousand dollars is approximately one penny, so we just burned up a half a penny two minutes ago.
Yep.
Uh, uh, Dave, that's why I was bringing this up, uh, uh, at, at the end, we have the big, the whole pie. And how, what's that whole pie gonna do as a percentage on the tax rate? And, and I, I, going through the packet, I saw a forty thousand dollar increase in, in highway. Um, that's why I happened to use that number, I just, I don't know where we're gonna end up, but I wanted to make sure the board is thinking about where we are and where we're gonna end up as we're moving through this process. That, that's what I was trying to get to, so thank you for that.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Um, so for someone in your situation, that's getting that amount of social security. If you have a three point two percent increase, over the course of a year, you'll have a hundred and three dollars and sixty-eight cents, and if you have a three hundred thousand dollar house, you'll spend twenty-four additional dollars, so you'll still have a net increase of seventy-five.
I, I don't, I will not, um, get into that comparison, because.
It's difficult to know, like.
No, I, but I wouldn't, I would never even pretend to be in front of the town saying that, because. Obviously, the social security recipients have much more to think about than what their taxes might be on their house for a three percent increase, primarily would be heat and food.
And everything else, healthcare.
It wouldn't be, it would not be, o- okay, I've got leftovers, now I can pay the, the town more taxes, that would not be.
But, but the reason I brought it up was, again, to make sure that we're not eating up all of that money.
No, no, you didn't, you didn't say nothing about this, but Brandon is drawing the comparison between, I'm, I'm cautioning him not to do what he just did. Which is to say, to merely go down, okay, let, let's just vote to spend this money because the people are still gonna have leftover money from social security.
That's not the conclusion that I was.
I can't believe what I'm hearing here.
No, no.
I was answering a question that was asked.
Yes.
Well, you are, but you raised twenty-five hundred dollars a month, but I'd gladly take twenty-five hundred a month in social security.
And, and August made a point when I was talking to him, which you could share with us now.
Sure. Uh, well, well, and first of all, I would like to say, uh, on the healthcare business, which we just closed, phenomenal research, and I think you really helped the board make decisions that were good for the employees of the town of Weathersfield. Um, what I'll also share, um, like Dave said, is, uh, the cost of living, um, increase is very different than actually cost of life. Whereas most residents of Weathersfield, um, I'm, I'm a military retiree, um, and many people are receiving social security, where you have predictable COLA increases. Um, but I think it's impossible to try to tie a COLA increase, which I don't think anyone was doing, but I don't think, you, you, it's two different things. Uh, for someone who owns their own business, um, or is a farmer, they're not getting a COLA increase, um, for their primary work that they do. And so I just, that's just, I would just say, uh, um, as we move forward to the overall budget, um.
Or, or I as a self-employed.
That's right, self-employed mechanic, you're, you're, no one's gonna say, hey, you know what, you did a great job, we're gonna make sure everyone pays you three point two percent more this year.
It's up to me, and, and I, I'm going up twenty percent, so I, I'll be there.
But I, but I will, I will say that, uh, coming out of the healthcare discussion, um, I think that that's a realistic, absorbable, and practical increase. Uh, and unfortunately, the, the cost of living and the cost of life seems to be steadily increasing, and also going back to private business owners, uh, like going on, when we get to solid waste. Um, some increases in the cost of doing business far outpace what we think the cost of living increases, uh, so I think we'll be in better shape this year.
So, cost, so we're on the cost of living, um, what do we wanna do with this? Uh, do we wanna take more time for discussion on this, you want, do we wanna enter into a motion and make a decision, uh, that the town manager could certainly use to help him with his budgets? Um, what's the preference of the board, and, who are, jump in, anyone? Go ahead, Wendy.
The only thing I was gonna say is that it is going to affect all of our decisions going forward with the budget, because we, until we have this, we will not be able to make any decisions.
That's right.
On budgets, 'cause everything that I see in the packet is dependent upon the COLA, that's.
I would motion to, uh, if I may, to approve the three point two percent increase, so we have predictability, and I, it matches the federal increase, um, which is, uh, far better than last year's, and I think it's, it's practical, so I'd motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion, uh, to, um, uh, adopt a COLA three point two percent for the twenty twenty-five budget year?
My com- my comment would be, I, you know, it's hard to get around not doing that. However, the town manager may be directed to consider reshaping how the labor works to fit that dollar amounts that ultimately will reflect the budget. Because I think the, the budget will be, I don't know what's, I haven't even seen anything what's coming on the table about what other things. Maybe expenses that are gonna be in, involved in the twenty, was it twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, budget. By doing that, take a look at the bottom line, it immediately adds another forty thousand, um, five sixty-six to roughly eighteen thousand.
Um, even though I motioned, I would also, um, support Dave on that topic, when we were talking healthcare, we were talking about employees, and so that, there may be. And so that, there may be a constraint that the town manager's faced with in terms of, uh, y- seeking additional employees or, or expanding employment. That's gonna be a constraint that we have to take into consideration if we're adding forty thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars, uh, to our employee costs.
Well, I, 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 I'll tell you what I look at here, i- is, you know, I, I was thinking three percent, but then I see the three point two, and, and what are you doing with, um, thirty, two thousand dollars? That's, uh, that's not gonna show up. Uh, a- and, and you can almost say that as you drop down to two or two and a half percent. Um, what is gonna show up is, um, disappointment in your employees as well. The, just because we, we take on forty thousand dollars here, doesn't mean we can't, a- a- and I hate to say this, because I know, I, I know how tight you're running the budget, but maybe we have to look at some other things somewhere else in the budget to balance these things out. I, I think this becomes one that's, uh, 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 under priority, if you, if we prioritize some, something has to go. That's my take on it. I, I think, I think a decision on, on, on COLA has to happen so we can enter into the rest of the budget discussions and, and work our way through that to get to that point. That's kinda where my other question that I asked that started the crazy discussion, uh, came from, was, the other thing the board needs to be thinking about is what is that top increase gonna look like for us? Where, where, what are we, and that's not for discussion tonight, but to think about in the future. Because we're, when we get all of these budgets in front of us, what is the total increase we're willing to accept? A- a- as a board, and, and what, what you present to us for a budget? Um, there is a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion on the motion to, uh, uh, adopt the, uh, three point two percent COLA for the twenty-twenty-five budget?
Can I?
Go ahead.
I appreciate what you just said, so then I will support that. Bu- it, but you're gonna have to bear in mind exactly what you just said, which was, I don't, I don't see the entire budget, either the general fund or the highway fund, or the solid waste is a little bit different, animal runs on fees. So I said, haven't seen that in totality, but you're a hundred percent right when you said, I don't know, something might stay and something might go as a result of allocating money to people. But, but I don't know that that means that someone that's here, a full-time, may not be, I don't know what. That'll be up to the manager to decide what to do, to make his choice, about fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
It, it, well, and, and, and us to be thinking about what that cap is. Uh, you know, are we at three percent, four percent, you know, six, what was last year, I think, went out at seven point two or seven point one-six or something like that, and then, and then-
We had an overall increase of, I believe, seven point nine-two percent on the budget.
So I, I'm in favor of taking this vote right now, so let, call the motion again.
Uh, I, okay, so we do have, we, we do have a motion on the floor, uh, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimous, three point two percent cost of living increase.
Can I add something quickly?
Yes, you may.
Um, so while we're, me included, I've seemed to be the most one that's, that's worried about spending money. I have yet to see, um, some information that would, um, ask questions about why for two years in a row, the grand list has gone down. And I think we need to pay attention to revenue to make sure that that doesn't happen. It sounds the strangest thing in the whole universe with the costs exploding. And one of the primary questions that I have is, what's being allowed to be depreciated? What is the definition, not from us, not from the gr- listers or from the town, but from the state, that says something is not fixed down like a house that can be viewed as equipment which is depreciated? I think that is got to be answered because we did get information that the grand list went up by like a million dollars, but when Brandon just said that, that the tax rate went up like seven point nine percent or whatever it was a year ago, we simply cannot let that happen this year. It's not gonna work. Something's going to crash.
Yeah, tha- you're, you're, you're talking about that personal property-
Yes.
-tax.
I, if, if that, if that's what, so, I don't know how the grand list is formulated, but it's got to be looked at. The last two years it's happened, last year was worse than the year before. Because we always, through your budget process right now, you're going to assume whatever the grand list that we're using for this year's, right now it's in ink.
I am.
A complete horror show would be like what showed up last year, where you get news that it's lower than the number that you're going to use.
Yes, a large utility was depreciated.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, but what's that gonna look like this year?
Right. So you're gonna go through all this budget process, again, using the same grand list, and then you get complete sticker shock again.
It, it's like we got a million dollar bump in one year, and then over three years, they took back one and a half.
So I want a definition from the state, because we do not determine the value of those plants, okay? We don't, the listers don't go over there and say-
Yeah.
We think it's worth thirty million dollars.
I'm not even sure the state does.
Yes, they do.
It, it, well, not the I, uh, IRS, it might be federal that regulates it.
They appealed, they appealed the assessment to the state.
Right, okay. Yeah, but I mean, where the actual law comes from could be the federal government, not the state.
Mike, it is gonna change, because every business does depreciate, and that, that figure is going to change.
Yeah.
Because it is a, it is equipment that is depreciating regardless.
It, it is, but, but there's other properties that go on and add to.
Correct, yes, that I understand, but I mean, looking at that one particular thing, correct.
But you had to see these numbers, these numbers were scary.
I did, I did see that, but I'm saying, you know, that's, no matter what, we are going to see, yes, we may see other things come on, but value is going to depreciate, because that's what-
But not to the level. It's, it's not to a level to get, to, to get to the offset of a million or two dollars worth of add-on, meaning new housing or decks or so forth.
What doesn't make sense to me on the, on the depreciation, and this is the question you're asking, so we know, because right now we don't.
Right.
And that is, just like anything else, like if, if I depreciate something i- i- in my business, i- it depends on what type of machinery it is, what category goes in on the IRS depreciation schedule, and that determines whether it's a seven-year, fifteen-year, or thirty-year depreciation. You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, that's right.
I know you do too, Dave, probably every, what, everybody does. But it seemed like this, th- this property went on at this, this, it was a lot of money, I, do you remember what it was?
They upgraded it, they, they upgraded it thirteen million dollars in one whack, so, but here's a fundamental question that I have. What is being viewed as equipment versus attached to the ground? You can't pick up and move what's going on, you just can't do that. So the definition, the sheer, no more than, no more than I have a house that might be bolted down, and I'm gonna say, okay, this is really equipment.
I do have an answer to this.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Right, I see you, just-
I just have a few second questions, is there anything else for the employees? Insurance is done, COLA is done?
Yes.
Is there any other reason they need, uh, we judge?
That's up to them.
Yeah. If they had input on those two things. Anything else you guys can see?
Nope.
I, I, I don't-
Unless you're interested in police cruisers.
Well, anybody wanna go for a ride? We have a driver.
That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, you can go ahead, please.
I don't wanna take up any time doing that, but, but when you're compiling these budgets, it, it might be all for naught if you get the surprise that you don't wanna see.
Okay.
It, it just, it just seemed to me that the depreciation wasn't spread out over, over a period of time. It was like, they're gonna get boom, 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 and it's, it's like-
Or, they may be doing it again for this year, and it'll still be offset, it won't be offset by what is added as far as new housing or decks. So we'll still end up with a big surprise. If they're gonna take the same depreciation as it took last year on a seven-year or fifteen-year schedule, taking it from thirteen million down, or twenty-five million down to ten million, we're in trouble.
It's, it's a good point. And, and we do need to, Wendy-
Okay, I, I did wanna hear what Brandon had to say, but I also do assume that the depreciation as in business, it, you know, it, as it depreciates, the, the depreciation is less that, as it goes down, but I did wanna hear what Brandon had to say.
That's exactly what I was about to say. Uh, so John Arison and I did do some research on this, and we discussed it. Um, and there is a limit to the depreciation. I have that upstairs, um, and I can release that information in the next meeting.
The interesting point is, they do, the, our electric bills don't, don't get depreciated and go down. So the, so the substance of what's going on to be put onto the grid-
Yep.
-isn't less.
It's interesting that you brought that up, but this is a whole leap, but, but somewhere in one of these budgets, I saw on there a line for, uh, lease payment, and there was nothing there. Uh, I was like, wait a minute, what happened?
So what happens is-
Don't, don't quit on that yet.
Well, not, not with that white item, but with any asset, any fixed asset, they depreciate each year. We depreciate everything in town, you, you'll see that in the audit. Um, there's depreciation that happens. Um, so with the utility, when you have equipment, that equipment depreciates. However, I understand from Dave, like, the value of that equipment is worth less every year.
Mm-hmm.
If they were to sell it, because it becomes older.
But then again, when they update it at the new cost of what equipment or infrastructure is, you know, they're, they've gotta cover that in their expenses going forward.
Well, they're gonna raise their rates, or, or negotiate to do that, to sell on a big-
Will the infrastructure upgrades that TDS is doing, uh, uh, will that be a positive, or is that, is that something different?
They may adjust their rates per customer to do, to say it's gonna cost twenty, you know, I don't know this, but it might be twenty-eight dollars instead of twenty-five or something.
No, I mean, like, y- you talked about the lines and stuff that they're putting in and, and all the infrastructure, and I know that they had to do other stuff to cut, to make that stuff work. And that stuff is located as equipment on the ground in Weathersfield. So they'll have to, they'll have to declare a property, um, increase i- in Weathersfield for that, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's enough on, on, on that. COLA's done, replaced for the police cruiser. How did we get off on that tangent? It wasn't me.
All right, so, I, I'm here to discuss about our aging car. Um, so we replaced the two thousand sixteen, um, a couple of months ago, with a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. Um, as part of our getting a car serviced, they also do an inspection on them. So we currently have a two thousand sixteen, which was the second cruiser we bought when I first got here. Uh, it has a hundred and twenty-two thousand miles on it with seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four idle miles. When we took it to have the oil changed, the inspection brought up some issues that we have to pull it off the road currently. Um, it needs front sway bar bushings, did you give them a copy of the invoice?
I did not, I have it upstairs.
Um, so to replace those was four hundred and fifty-six dollars, eight cents. Both rear knuckles need to be replaced on the cruiser. Um, the cost to replace that is two thousand two hundred, two dollars and ninety-four cents. And the blender actuator, um, stopped functioning, so that's seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, for a total of three thousand four hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Uh, we fell off on doing repairs because if we were to do a car auction, we'd probably get between fifty-five and sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we just sold the other cruiser, and we made twenty-five fifty. After paying for the fees and services, we took in twenty-three hundred. That's what our, our cost was. In order to keep the car functioning and on the road, we, we have to put those repairs into it, the thirty-four hundred dollars. Um, this morning, I actually had that car, and, uh, when the fire department went out and called at six-thirty, I had a spray of the windshield with spray de-icer and sit and wait in my driveway for the, um, bomb to go off the windshield, so I could actually go for a run. Um, I am here to ask that we look into getting a new car, because I don't think the cost of putting thirty-four hundred dollars into a car that's worth maybe six thousand dollars and can have something go wrong in the future. I just don't see the cost being a smart investment. Um, we know from buying the last car, that they're about sixty thousand dollars from start to finish, and that's buying the car, buying the extended warranty and outfitting the cruiser. I've been talking with Ford, because of the strike, even though, um, I'm understanding they're signing it, Ford has stopped making production of the police cruisers right now. So whatever is out there is what's available. Uh, we don't know about Dodge, and we don't know about Chevy. Um, just to put into, to perspective, so I know a lot of people are gonna say a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars isn't a lot of miles, but then you have the seven thousand idle hours, and then, this is no dig on the highway department whatsoever, but we have a lot of back dirt roads, so that beats up our suspension extremely, um, badly over the course of time, which is what's led to the sway bars going. Uh, the sway bars, uh, bushings are critical to keeping the car from swaying back and forth and, you know, rolling over, the knuckles can seize up at any point on us. And, um, if we do not have that car, then if one of our other cars could go down, we're, we're left with just one car in our fleet. My goal when Ed started was to be able to build up our fleet with newer cars with a goal of about a hundred thousand miles, or whenever the extended warranty was gonna be up, to get rid of those, so we can sell them at auction for a better price instead of beating the cars up. The cruiser that we just purchased, we got a hundred and twenty thousand mile warranty. So that car, when I talked to Brandon today, my, my goal is, when we get to within ten thousand miles of the extended warranty being outdated, start looking for another car, so that way we can sell that car, get more money at auction. Right now, Brandon will give you the financials on how much we have, um, in there, looking fo- moving forward to get a car. Um, but, if, if, if we don't get a car, then we're gonna have to put the thirty-four hundred dollars into it just to keep it on the road and make it a, a reliable lease car. And that's with nothing else going wrong, between that and purchasing of the tires, as I said to Brandon, it's gonna put me over on my repair budget already for this year, only into November. If we don't get any cruiser moving forward, it's only gonna get worse with the repairs.
So on the financial end of things, um, we currently have thirty-one thousand in reserves, um, after we transferred the ten thousand dollars from the police department budget into reserves this year. We sold the other car for two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. We estimate selling this one for sixty-five hundred.
Sixty, sixty-five hundred.
Um, last year, the police department finished the year with an estimated twenty thousand dollars in fund balance. I'm meeting with the auditors, not next Friday, but the Friday after, and I'll have our fund balance numbers. Um, and at that point, I think, since their budget ended up with a surplus, that twenty thousand dollars could be used for this police cruiser if the board decides to purchase it. Which would make up the cost of replacing the cruiser. The next cruiser that you have is the car, how many miles does it have on it?
So the rank, uh, the Charger has thirty-five thousand miles on it, and, uh, the new Explorer has four, and then the two thousand sixteen, which is eight years old, has a hundred point two thousand.
And how many miles are you putting on the Charger per year?
We average on both cars, we average about fifteen thousand miles a year on cruisers.
So the Charger won't have to be replaced for three or four years?
Well, the goal is, if, if we do get another cruiser, the goal would be to rotate the cars, um, so it'll get longevity to us, and hopefully not have to purchase a car for four or five years.
I see.
But I'm a little confused, so, I, there's a car with a hundred and twenty-two thousand that needs to be repaired right now?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, that one's gonna leave?
I'm asking to replace that, because it's gonna cost thirty-four hundred dollars in repairs-
Yeah.
-that we know of.
So, so, so what I'm asking is, and, and I, I'm gonna try to piece this together, um, because, I think it's really important, when you start ranking things about what really is, you know, important, I mean, I, I don't listen to the scanner a lot, but I listen to it enough. And I don't like it that you just said that the, the fogger doesn't work. It's not acceptable. So, but if, if we ordered a new one somehow, and somehow it came, we lose the one with a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and then your car becomes the third one, you'll just get the new one. Is that-
We'll rotate the cars. So we won't have a fixed, part-time officer car. We'll have a, a third car in the fleet like we have now, but we won't have to worry about, right now, the two thousand sixteen is completely out of warranty, so anything that we have to pay for comes out of our pocket. Our goal is to keep the cars under warranty that we have, and when it gets close to warranty, get rid of that car that's closest to it in order to save us money in the long run and get us more money on a trip, uh, I call it a trade-in, when they sell it at auction.
So my, my question is, are we gonna- So my my question is, are we going to have three cars or four?
Three.
So one twenty two leaves and a brand new one appears.
Correct.
Who? The part timers will then use your car, the Charger?
It's we're going to rotate the cars around so that way not one car is getting put all the miles on it. So I may be driving the new car for a little while. That may be parked. I may take the Charger for a little while. It's like we do now with this car. Unfortunately, every other weekend, my car gets used all the time because we can't use this car until we make a decision as to put in the repairs or or look elsewhere.
And the other and the other downside would be if something goes wrong with one of these other cars, although they are low mileage, thirty four thousand, I think you said.
Yes, but my car is already, we're waiting on a year shift or you put in the car.
But the point is, if another car, if one of the other cars go down, then what? Now we got one car.
No, and that's why that's why I said I was confused. Do we have three cars or four? Because I
Well, we're we're never going to have four cars unless we hire more personally.
And right now, we have two that are working and one that's sitting. Correct?
Correct. It's actually sitting in the fire.
So what what would happen if the if the if the if we all came together and so when is this being talked about happening? When when would the arrival or whatever be contemplated?
Well, first, we wanted to see how the board responded to this. The next step would be gathering the estimate to bring back to you so we can review it.
So what we would do is the same process. We would we would go through the the state bidding process to see who has any cars left on the lots. And then we would send out the bid, just like we did for the car with the cost of the extended warranty and then the upfitting of what it would cost. And then we would come back with with the total amount would be based on what what car we go with.
Maybe we should take up about the fix. Now, Bill just explained to us that if we spend the thirty five hundred or whatever it's going to be, five thousand dollars to fix the one that we have with a hundred and twenty two thousand miles on it, that, you know, we're not magically going to drop fifty thousand dollars out of the sky to go put out an RFP to get it. So maybe we should think about either taking day money out of the rainy day fund or something to happen to make this repair or so that it doesn't come out of his to- total twenty four budget. And he just explained to us that this, and he went and got the numbers, three or four thousand. I don't I don't know. I just.
Well, and that and that fixes the cruiser, but I don't think it fixes the long term problem.
No, no, but he just.
So what it so so then we entered into the discussion on that. So what does that look like? Going to the people at town meeting for approval on either purchasing the new cruiser or or funding the reserve account or what's that look like?
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, no, because our last cruiser that we just bought for Ryan was predominantly ARPA funds. A pretty good shot.
Yeah.
And Brandon just explained to us that there's thirty thousand dollars and and the SIU, is it, grant has added ten thousand dollars and we put that into the car fund.
His twenty thousand dollar fund balance from from his budget.
Thirty thirty one, right?
No, he he's talking about being under the last year of the budget, so he's talking about twenty thousand that he just brought up.
So is there any um, is there any um, unresolved money in the general fund? That as a result of that twenty thousand dollar undershot from the from the police?
Yes, I anticipate having fund balance this year. The auditors and I are meeting. It's either it's it's next Friday.
Yeah, but this is way too early to determine that. I'm talking about from twenty, from June thirty of twenty three.
Yes, that's that's the fund balance we'll be discussing.
Okay.
And we'll have solid numbers to present to you on November twentieth.
Okay, so we're not anticipating anything. It's going to be known.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
We'll have known fund balances on November twentieth.
From six, everybody pick up on that? From six thirty of twenty three? So we're not projecting forward.
Nope.
We're okay.
I do have projections forward as well.
No, I don't want to know about that because no, because some things can, some bad things can happen. No?
Well, you haven't heard about twenty fifty yet. Ray.
So in a perfect world, if Ford accepts buying this cruiser, how long is it going to be before you get a cruiser to your bank?
Well, I mean, it takes a while. Like as I said right now, Ford stopped production when the the strike happened. They shut down the production line. They're not going to start producing for twenty twenty four. We haven't heard from Chevy or Dodge yet. I know Clermont Ford has three cruisers on their lot and that's all that they're going to get. I don't know about the other places. So it would be a bid process that we'd have to go through and and probably like last time we had to go through.
Six months, eight months?
In a perfect world, you're looking five to six months out and that's if we can get one that's already done.
If you don't fix this third cruiser and it sits there for five to six months, is that going to take?
That's why I asked to fix it. It's two separate issues.
It's going to up my miles because so what I do is every other weekend when John works, he takes my, so I leave my car here for John. John takes my car because it's not suitable.
It'll take months.
Police. If if he ever got into a an accident with that cruiser right now, we would be in a lot of trouble because of the repairs.
But if you don't fix that cruiser and you try to go with two cruisers here, the cruiser mileage is going to go way up and you're going to have to get a new cruiser.
I think.
So if anybody remembers when we had the pickup truck here. So we had a problem when the pickup truck got into an accident. We only had two cars on our fleet at that time. It was the new cruiser and the pickup truck. The pickup truck got in an accident and it took three months to repair the truck. That's why the car that we just got rid of had so many miles because we drove one car for three months while the other car was in repair. Then my car got hit. And because it was a new car, they couldn't get the parts for two weeks. So then we had to share the pickup truck when they finally fixed that for two months until we got rid of that. So that's if something happens to this third car, then my car would be the one that has the miles put up on it, which we're trying to not do.
I I I think the gist of what I'm getting over here is that both things need to happen. Does that sound about right?
The reason I came here is the repairs are something that if if it's not something going to move forward with the car, then we're going to have to get the the vehicle repaired. And I just want it out there that this is fixing the known issue right now.
Did I understand correctly that if if we said go buy a new car right now, it'd probably be five or six months?
No, it's if if we order a car that we want, that would be if the production line is open. Right now, Ford shut down the production line. So you cannot get a Ford Excuro unless you get one off of the lot.
Okay, so if you're getting one off the lot, how soon are you going to have a car?
It depends on if they even have it in the area.
So I I can't. But it still has to be outfitted and.
Yep, it still has to be outfitted. It still has to be.
So how long still before that's online, if you will, for you?
Ryan's car, for example. Ryan's car was over at Ford and it took us three months. And it was on the lot and it took us three months from the time we signed it.
And I and I think that's the concern here, Bill, is is that even if we had a car on the lot, we're three months.
Well, and it could be longer, it could be shorter because Sentinel right now is what is used for the cage inside the car. And Charles Town is running a renovation right now where they have a brand new Durango, but they can't get it outfitted because they're waiting on that part. That's what held up when we ordered from Yikes.
Okay, so let me finish what I was trying to say. And that is, I don't think we want to be three or four months with this third car not usable. That's why I said I think we're looking at both things happening here. Which which way that goes, whether we I think the first thing is fix the car. Dave Dave is asking whether he has the authority within within his budget to just do it.
I know he does. It's it's a repaired well with under ten thousand dollars. You've got the information about a thirty four hundred dollar repair. Let him let him let them both get together and do the job. Fix the car.
Yeah, I I agree on that. That was the thing that I wasn't understanding is regardless, we need to fix.
I I think it's a no brainer. I think the repair has to be made. And I think I think that what we're looking at, though, is the decision on budgeting and planning to buy a new one and in and possibly in the new budget based on funds of funds available now and and budgeting the funds.
Well, I for me, that was in my head as well. Is it going to be something that we're going to look into the budget for the budget process for, which is going to push it even further out because you're not going to have those decisions until March? And then you've got six, seven, eight months after that to the next car. So you're looking at almost a year out if you do it that way. And that's why the proposal here ha- it works with in- internal funding that already exists to move now. But we still need numbers from Brandon. He says they're going to be here at the next meeting uh, that that might clarify things a little bit for us.
If you're going to please, if you're going to please reserve, your budgeting aspect should be replenishing that reserve tax.
Abs- abs- and absolutely, that's that's the other thing I I already.
And Mike brought it up. So when we the reason we got away from ordering cars in March was everybody's budget gets approved in March. Everybody immediately calls the dealership and says, order me a car. And then that's a six to eight month window from the time you got the car. Depending on the upgrade you use, um, depends on how backlog they are. So we used to use a company out of Amiens very mass. And we ordered the car in March. We got it in November by the time it was outfitted. We we chose Yikes this last time to upfit our car. Um, they did a really good job. They turned it over in a quick time. The worst thing was we were just waiting on the cage, which is unfortunately Sentinel's issue. Um, so if we order, wait until March to order a car, you're looking at September, October of next year before we take possession.
And and that's if everything was going the way it used to, which we don't know if that's going to happen either.
Lesson during COVID that we got.
So so Brandon, you you stepped out. Did you catch what the board was doing?
Yes.
Okay, so we're putting this in your lot to get the car fixed.
Yep.
The hundred and twenty two thousand mile car. Get that fixed, first of all. And then we need numbers on this, uh, if you can find something that's out there now, right? Isn't that what was what was going on, Dave?
Well, we're open to listening.
Yes. I was actually going to try to get to the next part about whether Bill has to be here for those for those meetings or not or whether we can just handle that one. I I mean, is the board comfortable with what Bill has presented us at this point? And we know what we're looking at moving forward and we can just communicate with Brandon and and Bill doesn't necessarily have to come out. Because he doesn't, he can't see through the windshield.
So I think I think to summarize, Dave made the point that it's within the town manager's authority to make the repairs now immediately. So you have a safe cruiser and you have three cruisers operational for three officers.
Yeah, but I was, what I was more thinking about was the discussions on on a new cruiser, whether Bill needs to be here for those or not. I I I think we can work with Brandon.
I think from this point, it becomes a financial decision.
Yeah, I will look, so I will work with you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Um, highway department budget.
All right. So the quota has been set now so I can, I just basically built that number into the budget. So the numbers that I'm giving you now will be a little bit different than what you see in the memo. So the overall budget is increasing by twenty three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars. And that does include the cost of living adjustment and it includes the decision on healthcare. I did enter the twenty twenty four Blue Cross Blue Shield plans into the budget anticipating a decision in favor of Blue Cross Blue Shield. But if it didn't.
You said the twenty three thousand did not include the three point two?
It does include.
Okay.
Yep. And it also includes the healthcare change. If healthcare went a different way tonight, I would have notified you that we need to change healthcare in in the FY twenty five highway department budget. Um, the tax need is increasing by fifty four thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars. Not forty thousand. That includes the cost of living adjustment that we just made.
What's that number again?
Uh, fifty four thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars.
Even?
Uh, not even. Fifty four nine five nine.
Is is some of that, um, is some of that, and I think the answer is yes, the healthcare, some of what you just said that the that's in the.
Yeah, actually, we'll go through each line.
No, 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 because I because when I because when I added the healthcare, whatever, you know, half an hour ago, it came to fifty eight, four seventy eight. But that was in total for all of the employees of all of the town. So when you just said that the highway budget increases by fifty four thousand, does that include the healthcare of the highway department?
So there is not, and and we'll get down to the healthcare line item in the FY twenty five highway department budget. But there's no healthcare cost change in the highway department budget because plans vary that.
But there has to be because we just voted on a.
Depends on what the changes were.
Yeah.
Some went down.
I'll get down to that in just a second. Or we can, we can go there. Well, let me stick with revenues first. So this year, we're in, I'll look at fund balance as well in the budget, but this year we're decreasing fund balance used by thirty one thousand. And when we do this, it automatically increases the tax need. So August, just because you're, this is your first budget year with the town, are you familiar with fund balance?
Um, basics.
Okay, so what happens is when a budget, let's say you have a million dollar budget in FY twenty three, and at the end of the year, you only spend nine hundred thousand. You have a hundred thousand in like surplus funding that becomes fund balance. So generally, we either move fund balance into a reserve account or we use fund balance to decrease the next year's budget's tax need. So if you need a million dollars in FY twenty five, let's say, you have a hundred thousand in fund balance, the board could choose to use fifty of it to reduce the tax need. Um, and that's what we did in in this past highway department budget. The problem is when you do that, it's really one time money and you don't want to have a surplus, but sometimes things happen that cause a surplus. Maybe you lose an employee halfway through the year. So you don't spend that line out and maybe it takes six months to replace him. Maybe you don't. So when you use fifty thousand in fund balance, it creates a gap in the next year budget and tax need. And that's what we've been doing for the past couple of years. So we're trying to back up from doing that. And we're decreasing fund balance used by thirty one thousand, or at least I'm recommending that we do. This budget does not include, does include new health insurance figures. Um, we also budgeted a new line item in the in the budget called Highway Insurance Benefits twenty twenty five contingency. And what that does is we're budgeting what we need in healthcare, knowing that between January first and June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, there'll be a potential health insurance cost increase. So what I did was I took healthcare, I increased it by, I think it was ten percent. I divided it by two and that's how I came up with that number. I'm not saying it's going to be right. It's going to be close. Highway insurance, property boiler, auto liability and workers' compensation has not been released to us yet. I did add inflation onto the onto insurance in the budget. And we should receive those figures by November sixteenth. So this budget is not ready to vote on. It's very close, but we still have some costs that are going to come in that could go down or they could go up based on our rate. So on on November twentieth, I'll have those line items updated and those line items are noted in the budget. So if you go to page thirty five, you'll see the highway department budget. And we don't know what state aid was. Generally, it doesn't go down. We kept it low funded at one fifty two. The same with driveway permits. They're really difficult. We'll need a driveway permit, um, or if we'll have any of that year. So we've just usually kept them around sixty four dollars and we usually come in pretty close. Same with overweight permits. Those are generally the same every year. Highway service to solid waste revenue, this is a revenue that is generated because the solid waste fund is an enterprise fund. We get, we charge that budget for highway department labor and also highway department admin. And then those expenses in the solid waste fund are split between everyone that uses the transfer station. The next line item, which is the one that I was discussing earlier, is that fund balance carryover. We used forty six dollars last year. I'm proposing fifteen, so the difference is thirty one. So when you go all the way up to the top of revenues and you see the highway tax revenue need, it's forty thousand. Thirty one thousand of that tax revenue need is coming from that line item. Now into the expense side. I'll make all these adjustments to wages. Now into the expense side, um, I'll make all these adjustments to wages and reflect that on November twentieth. But going to the health insurance benefits line item, where, Dave, this is the question that you had. You see a hundred and forty-five thousand in FY twenty-three, and a hundred and forty-five thousand in FY, I mean, excuse me, a hundred and forty-five and twenty-four, and a hundred and forty-five thousand and twenty-five. And that, that number is accurate based on what we know about health insurance right now.
For the people that are at highway?
Correct.
So there's no move in the highway on the increase.
There's six hundred.
Due to the town.
Six hundred and thirty-nine dollar savings.
That means there's an awful big change elsewhere.
There was changes in healthcare. Um. How we, let's see, let's go down to summer mowing, this is a contract that the board voted on last year, and that increased by sixteen-five, it's just in the contract, so that's why you see a thirty-five hundred dollar increase there. When I met with Ray, and based on prior years, we're dropping salt two thousand, but increasing gravel five thousand. Um, and increasing chloride by twenty-five hundred. And then you'll see that kinda offset with our debt payments, our interest each year decreases as we pay more principal. Um, so we're saving an interest on our paving loan, our grader loan, our plow truck loan, um, and our dump truck loan.
I would like to point out real clear that, um, using the fund balance is nice for one year, but it costs you for a couple of years after to come back up again. Um, we only had an eighty-five hundred and sixty dollar increase in my highway budget this year. But because we gotta make up for what we used for fund balance last year for cash, um, it's up being, you know, forty thousand dollar tax duties. This year.
I had one question.
Go ahead.
What account does, um, road signage, is that under advertising, like when you post roads? Like during mud season or you need signs?
Road signage is for stop signs, speed up signs, that kind of thing.
And and where is that in here?
Road signs, under the categories of road signs.
Okay.
Uh, one, uh, twelve seven, one oh one, fifty eight, seventy, road signs.
Not much.
So I would just, I I just would ask you to consider, uh, increasing that. Um, when you, when, when we listen to the police chief talk about the wear and tear on the cruisers, um, an observation I have, like local to me, but probably throughout Weathersfield, is when you look at Katy Hill, Plains, uh, Piper, Gulf Roads, um, there still seems to be lots of traffic when the roads are in really bad shape in the worst of winter and mud season. And I think that, um, that leads to more road repairs needed, um, you know, hardships on local residents. And so I think that one thing you could do to, uh, counter that is when the roads are really in poor condition, is having the signs, um, I think you have a limited number where, uh, local traffic only for a couple few days until the roads can be recovered.
Yep.
Um, so I would just say, I I I think you might wanna have a little bit more money there for your road signs, money input.
That would be, um, I usually get those, that style road sign or temporary road signs, these are permanent. So I don't even have any money, I usually get grant money for those through, um, passes, that's where I, that's where I buy those.
Okay.
These are for stop signs, speed up signs.
Understood.
But yeah, I've been working on getting one, one thing the board can really help with is make a policy, so you can enforce something if you keep the business that's driving up the road, even though it's closed for local residents, there's no light signs.
That might be a whole nother separate discussion, I suppose.
But that's, that's where, that would be a big, that would be a big help, but I have no teeth to, uh, there's no way to stop people from doing it other than these, and that didn't work.
Brandon, is there a projected, um, fund balance for highway this year?
Yeah, on November twentieth, I'll be releasing that as well. Um, so there'll be highway fund balance, there'll be general fund fund balance, and there'll be a cumulative deficit in this solid waste.
Um, do you think that the highway fund balance would be significant enough not to ask for a special article?
Yes.
Good.
And I, I really hope to take the fund balance and start pretty much in the reserves instead of paying down the budget. I think over time, that would save more tax dollars in the long run, by using it to do capital improvements or buying equipment, instead of borrowing more money than you have to do that stuff, first of all.
Are there any special articles to be considered for highway?
Yes.
These are like the backup.
No, very little at this point, cause Ray and I have a meeting Wednesday to deliver it, so.
The backup needs to be placed, you've been talking about the block years, and it's just a year.
No, well, one of the, one of the, yes, I agree, but I don't know what's in, so when you, when you bring that to us, it it would have been easier to to listen to Bill when he was doing that, to have a package for us to consider. So when you're bringing that to us for whatever, then say, here's what's in the reserves, here's, here's what I think it's gonna be. Okay, okay.
My my thought would be, you know, if you need X amount of dollars not to exceed.
I don't know.
And you get what you think that is gonna be for all the ones you need and everything, and you might not even borrow third, depending on your reserves.
And and at some point, somewhere, looking at, Brandon.
Yep.
Looking at the overall budgets, once we have everything, and all of these proposals that come in with articles, I want the budget, I want, somewhere, I want the budget to say, if all articles pass, this is the total tax increase.
Yep.
Cause we need to know what that number is.
But we're far away from that.
Yes, we are, yes, I just, go, go ahead, bud.
Where, so when you're meeting with Ray for the next meeting, for the twentieth or whatever, um, I'd like to see some type of, uh, capital equipment purchase plan, because if, if the backhoe comes forward, and let's say that it's a hundred, I don't know what it's gonna be, a hundred and twenty-five, a thousand or something, ooh, pick a number. And in the reserve account is fifty or something, and then said, somebody's gonna ask for another fifty or seventy or eighty or something like that to buy that, but that drains the bank account, so when a dump truck comes up, doesn't work. So I, I, not only would I like to see what you're talking about for that, but I've noticed Ray's pickup looks like there's some rust over the wheel wells to me.
I I I can do a flatbed and run that for four years.
Okay, I'm just saying that I, but but if it's not one thing, it's gonna be another.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
And I think I heard Ray say that that what he'd like to see happen, the fund balances is put them in the, uh, reserve accounts.
Ultimately, I like to, we just often have to borrow, have to borrow a bunch.
So so we're not ignoring those reserve accounts anyway.
No, but but we're gonna, we're gonna be in here for a wake-up call, not only on the, the, the principal price of whatever that's gonna be talked about buying. Look at what happened to the cruisers, the last one was thirty-five, now it's fifty-seven. Um, interest rates, I do not think the town can borrow money for less than four and a half right now.
That's where it'd be really important, my book, to have a good reserve, wouldn't interest rates are really high, you'd drill money, if they're really low, you can borrow.
They're not gonna be low, though, and the interest, the principles have come up so much on things.
Over time, you have a good reserve and a good capital plan.
But we had a, we had. But we had a conversation a while ago about how frequently we can do that. How many loans do we want to have to ourselves at one time, you gotta be careful with that.
And the treasurer has about capped out, especially against ourselves, he mentioned that to us.
Yeah, we are.
He said, he said you can't borrow anymore, what do we outborrow, because we have the paving loan.
I wasn't saying borrow, I'm saying from where reserves are built up, they don't have to borrow at all, they can use the reserve, that's not borrowing from the.
She's gonna say, that's what I was hearing, that it's.
Your reserves are in good shape.
Yeah.
How much is in the reserve now, for ca- for equipment?
Two hundred and nineteen thousand.
Oh. But no, you'd be surprised, because you, the, the, what I'm trying, I'm trying to say is, the thing that you're gonna be looking at to buy, the dollar number has grown dramatically. Whatever thing that you wanna buy, with, now the ten-wheelers have passed two hundred thousand.
That's, and that's where it's really important to find a good capital plan that Brandon and I've already discussed, where you pick the year at six years, your dump truck's worth eighty-five K. Trade in it, cause it's gonna start dropping down to forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five every year, you gotta find the optimum time to trade all this equipment in, to get the most money that way, too, it all, it all connects.
I will say that, based on the current interest rates, having a discussion to purchase anything is scary. Um, I think that, I don't think that we can borrow for less than five point two five percent. Um, but Steve might tell us something different.
And that's where the art, you know, I need to say, it would maybe help offset some of that, which you've already been doing.
Yeah, that, that's a, between, if we could assemble a package to where we don't have to borrow right now, that would be my recommendation.
I was ready to use that frame, famous four-letter word when Bill was here, but I backed off it.
But it's, you know, that's only, that's only something I'd, the total solution is never really good comprehensive capital plan.
What is the four-letter word?
Arfa, our friend.
Duh.
Aunt, aunt, arfa.
Our friend's getting worn out.
I know our friend is getting worn out.
Needs to be used somewhere.
But we're gonna ride that horse to the end.
If we use it for something to not borrow money right now, I think that's smart, because the interest rates are very high, and we're paying a lot of money in interest for that fire truck we just purchased, and that's ten thousand dollars per year, um.
Do they have it yet?
And they, that, they, all of this fits into the thing about not trying to spend arfa, arfa funds on annually, you know, the costs.
Things that will create.
Stretching it out the longest term you can, the value.
There are a lot of towns that don't have any money left.
So since we're not gonna have arfa funds for very long, I, I wanna just say this to Brandon. I think it would be really great if we could get this capital plan so that we as a board have that in front of us, and we can then maybe, um, work away from borrowing, and and I'd be very interested to see what that plan looks like. And at some point, if you and Ray could get together, so that we could have a, um, a five-year, what it looks like in five years, regardless, as far as, you know, some sort of projection.
Arfa funds won't last that long.
What we do with arfa funds now, I'm saying, forget the Band-Aid, I'd like to see a capital plan, what it would be, um, over the course of a few years, specifically for the highway department as far as equipment, so we can get away from borrowing, and because we're not gonna have the Band-Aid anymore.
Yep.
So, you know.
The only thing borrowing does is it costs the town money by not having the money upfront, and it's something that we can budget for, but.
But here's what happens.
Real quick, my idea of a capital plan is something more than what I have the capacity to develop right now. I know the treasurer and I have been working on the fire departments, and we can release equipment, uh, uh, not an equipment, um, a fire truck capital plan and motorized highway capital plan. We wanna really get technical and get into equipment, PPE, and make it cumulative. But that's something that we've been working on, and it's, it's very time-consuming, and we just don't have the capacity right now. But soon, within six months or so, we should be able to focus on that. It'll take a couple of months of concentrated work.
The only thing I'll, I'll add to that is, uh, uh, part of that capital plan and getting away from, um, loans means having the money. Part of that is reserve accounts.
Yes.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need to be considering that stuff for articles if necessary.
He, he, here's what will happen, Wendy, I'll, I'll, I'll sum up exactly what will happen with the picture that you just drew. If, I'm not just gonna use the highway, cause we're talking about highway, if the highway budget is, is correctly put together, and it becomes close to zero with, with income and expenses, which you would hope for, I mean, why would you ex- expand it more than you had to? So therefore, you don't have the ability to put an enormous amount of money from any surplus that you have into the, into reserve accounts. You would, you, because of the, remember, I said a minute ago, the, the dollar amount of things that you wanna buy are so great, two hundred, three hundred thousand, the grader's probably gonna be five or six hundred thousand. You would have to have special articles, which you just touched on, of at least, and not borrow money? I don't know that that's ever gonna happen, you'd have to have special articles that, for designated only for highway, of like seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year, every year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Somewhere around there.
For example, right now, with the truck payments I have, and I'm really close to trying to explain this without, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, I could go take the trucks on a six-year schedule, not borrow money, using the trade-ins, if it was developed, that's one piece, all kinds of other variables, it's hard to get it all together, but that's just an estimate. At a hundred and twenty thousand a year, right now, we're paying about, what, fifty to sixty thousand a year in truck payments? Currently, so there's, there's half, a third of it. Anyways, I wanna ask, I've been working on a capital plan for paving. And I know everybody's really busy and struggling to get a real good comprehensive capital plan for the budget. Uh, we might wanna utilize arfa money to, I know for six thousand dollars, I can come up with a very comprehensive ten-year loss plan for paving. I'll hire somebody to come in, do the whole plan, it'll tell you what we'll have for fourteen miles of road, what needs to be paved, what you should be doing, how much money you need to spend, everything, you can do the same thing with the other budgets. If, you know, Brandon thought we could use some extra help, we could maybe use some arfa money and find somebody to come in and help us with a real good capital plan.
Wendy?
Not a bad idea, and I know a couple of firms that do, that do that.
I mean, that, to me, that's where you're gonna save your biggest money, is to have a really solid capital plan, all the way across the board. And and to nickel and dime, you know, or to save two thousand here, two thousand there, and I can save twenty, thirty, forty thousand on purchases, not even borrow that money or raise taxes to pay for it, would be very beneficial.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, I wasn't, uh, saying that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be borrowing. I, I was saying, if we could look at a plan that would lower the amount that we were borrowing, and I think that.
Yes.
Regardless, if Ray wants to put something together and present it before us, I think we need to at least, you know, I, he's trying to say, I'm interested in doing something that, um, would, we would be borrowing less. And he's trying to explain the fact that if he was to sell things at a certain price, I'd like to see what it looks like.
Oh, I, I agree.
If it's gonna, if it, if it will decrease, I, cause I, I understand, and I agree with you, Dave, everything, equipment, the cost of equipment in, in just the last.
It's crazy.
This, this year alone, right now, if I have, have come in and give you an estimate on a greater, um, it's gonna be worth about three ninety thousand on trade-in in five years, and be paid for it, because we have a two-year warranty. After that, it drops like twenty thousand a year, and if it hits seven years, when that warranty's gone, it's gonna plummet another seventy-five K on a yield limit. So that tells you five years, buy a new one and get it for eighty grand, a hundred grand, and if there's.
That way, you're using your investment moving forward.
Right.
But but I'm not, I'm not buying that the difference will be a hundred, and I haven't talked to Jeff.
Four hundred and eighty thousand with the operator cost.
I know, but.
Get three hundred and seventy-five or three hundred and eighty on trade-in.
Any conversation that I've had with him lately, all the costs have exploded, it's not just, it's just what's going on.
I'm just trying to be business.
Yes, yes.
Anything more, anything else, Thomas?
Um, nothing else.
Go.
So what is, you've gotta plug in these numbers and then come back on the twen- whatever the twentieth, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have the budget fully assembled by the twentieth, and have fund balance numbers. I'll make everyone copies of the reserve accounts, additionally, the general fund will be presented on the twentieth as well.
Okay, that's it on highway for now?
Is the total general fund gonna be presented at that same meeting?
Yep.
You really wanna put us to sleep. You're not gonna, you're not gonna break. You're not gonna break it down to two, to have, like, have it to one from the first of December?
Give you the total picture of the general fund, um, and then we can break it down from there.
Well, how about if we do the solid waste budget now?
Yep. Um, so.
Thank you, good night.
In your packet, I provided a memo and a budget that was based on rough estimates. Um, and I had stated in that memo. And I had stated in that memo that I would be doing an additional analysis between now and the next meeting. I decided to do that today, um, so disregard what the packet says, that analysis is done. Um, and before you, you have a memo, um, you have a big, a large piece of paper that shows the solid waste budget. Um, this budget is complete, without the, the exception of entering the COLA and, um, with, uh, insurance. Everything else is, is done. So the FY twenty-five solid waste fund budget, level funded wages, so I'll make those adjustments, and you'll have those on eleven-twenty. Pay the additional analysis, reference in the memo has been done for CND, single-stream recycling, municipal solid waste disposal and glass. Um, there's a cool spreadsheet here, it's the horizontal one, and this is something new that we did this year, um, to really jump into the variable expenses, and I'd like to hop over to that for just a second, and just kinda focus on our variable expenses, which is the biggest increase in the budget this year. Um, the first chart shows CND material, and that shows your pull, the number of pulls that you have, the rate that you're paying for your pulls, the total amount that you're spending in pulls, your processing numbers, your rates, fuel surcharges, et cetera. Um, so you'll see for CND, um, that over the past twelve months, October twenty-two to September twenty-three, we had ninety-three pulls of CND, and we've disposed of three hundred and sixty-eight tons of CND material. You'll also see that we had fifty-four pulls and disposed of two hundred and fifty-three tons of recycling materials. We had fifty-seven pulls and disposed of five hundred and seventy-five tons of municipal solid waste materials, and we had twelve pulls and disposed of sixty-one tons of glass. That's a lot. Over the past twelve months, we've spent sixty-five thousand on CND, sixty-seven thousand on recycling, eighty-two thousand in municipal solid waste, and thirty-three hundred in glass. Last week, August and I, as August has been appointed this solid waste representative, we met with our hauler, uh, Alba Waste, and they provided estimates for our FY twenty-five cost. Um, I just wanna hold there. On a larger scale, the solid waste district is going out to bid for haulers, so there'll be another competitive environment in February. And these costs are just based on what we've learned from one part of that.
So, that, hold on just a second, so you just defined the solid waste district, what does that mean?
So the solid waste district is the district, it's made up of, I believe, twenty-three towns, I believe.
Okay, so not Weathersfield, Redding, and West Windsor?
No.
No.
It's a district like Windsor, southeast, there's twenty-three towns, and out of those twenty-three towns, six, there's six facilities like ours.
Who is the, hold on now, Casella?
Uh, Casella and Alba Waste will be competing for the bid, um, and basically what we do is, August and I, as the select board of waste representatives, we go to that meeting, we put out, we approve what bid goes out. Um, I'm on the executive committee as well, so we vote internally, and there's five of us, all-town managers. Um, we review the bids on a, from that level, and then we present it to the solid waste district commission who votes to release the bid. The bid goes out, we review it. We don't all have to go with the same hauler, but going out to bid together collectively generally
So what relationship does that mean to this budget, with, on a solid waste, of the twenty-three town? Um, do they set the price on some things that we have to deal with, or what?
So that, when the bids come back, we'll know what our pull charge will be for our CND, our single-stream recycling, our glass, um, and our MSW. Right now, we have a really good estimate, um, and that's actually on the last page of this horizontal sheet. So in FY twenty-five, recycling, we're anticipating fifty-four pulls at a, at that rate. And we're anticipating two hundred and fifty-three total tons at the rate disclosed there. For a total cost of seventy-one thousand in recycling, sixty-eight thousand in CND, eighty-six thousand in MSW, and thirty-four hundred in glass. In FY twenty-two, we punched an estimated forty-nine thousand times. If we have a similar number of punches in FY twenty-four, which they don't fluctuate too much, they generally go between forty-seven and like fifty thousand in punches. Um, so I went, based on FY twenty-two numbers, um, we will raise two hundred and eleven thousand in variable revenues. If we receive the eighty-five hundred in other variable revenues, we'll have a grand total of two hundred and twenty thousand in variable revenues, which is a thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollar shortfall in what we need to cover variable expenses. Um, what this equates to in FY twenty-five, and that's why, um, I thought this was really important to review now, is we'll need to raise another thirteen thousand in punch ticket revenue. So what you do is you take your total num- total amount of expenses, which is two thirty-three, divided by, sorry for the dollar sign, just cross that out, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven punches, you would need four dollars and sixty-eight cents per punch. So where is this coming from? We have some charts here, um, if we wanna just kinda start at the first chart. We don't charge for recycling, we do charge for MSW and CND. Um, so you can see here, we had two hundred and fifty-three tons of recycling that we didn't charge for, but we offset that with five hundred and seventy-five tons in MSW, CND, and glass. Um, the percentage of materials disposed is twenty percent recycling, forty-six percent MSW, twenty-nine percent CND, five percent glass. Cost per material type, seventy-one thousand for recycling, eighty-six for MSW, sixty-eight for CND, thirty-four in glass. And the last page is a percentage breakout of those costs, so thirty-one percent of our variable expenses, recycling, thirty-seven percent is MSW, thirty percent is CND, and then one percent is glass. So that's the first part of the budget. I'm just gonna get through the second part, and then we can discuss. So our fixed expenses will increase a little bit based on the COLA. Um, wages include your operator wages, your attendant wages, and then you also have the, you go down the budget to line sixty-two fifty, sixty-two sixty, and sixty-two sixty-five, those all increased by the COLA as well. But without that, in FY twenty-five, it would, it shows our allocations, so the punch, which, based on what I'm seeing now, the permit sticker will not need to increase. It'll, it would remain at fifty dollars. Then it shows the other allocations per town. August and I have a meeting with Redding and West Windsor next Wednesday, and this information will be presented to them. Um, that's where we're at.
Or, I have a second one, quick thing, too, before you guys get started. If you look at the, if you look at the last chart, the pie chart, um, it shows thirty-one for recycling and one percent for cost on glass. Neither one of those are charged, they're all for free. Just a quick, a quick overview, so everybody understands, the state of Vermont's really trying to get people to recycle. Um, they've got rid of compost out of the trash, they've got rid of all these recycling things out of the trash. In the past, our overage on trash punches has resulted in being able to cover that. The more they get rid of what gets thrown away, the more the ratio changes, and you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get punches for trash. We're not charging for recycling, we're losing thirty-two percent, thirty-two percent of our cost at transfer station are non-recoverable. You're not charging for those, and there's no way to offset them unless you charge more for the stuff that you are charging for, which is the trash and the CND, and that's when you get that four-dollar, you get a set number for a punch. So, this is, that's the way the state works, they wanna get rid of the trash and change it to recycling. Instead, you don't charge for recycling, and you think you're awesome. Anyway, that's all I got.
I mean, the way that I look at it is, regardless of whether we charge or not for recycling, it's, the price is gonna be the same for all four of those items. So the structure of it, I think, has been, we wanna promote recycling.
You either increase the punches or you increase the cost per punch.
And it, let's say we charge for recycling, okay, so now we're not paying four dollars and sixty-eight cents per punch for trash. It's still gonna be four dollars and sixty-eight cents, it's just gonna be structured between three different ways of charging.
No, people just aren't gonna recycle, they're just gonna put trash, they're gonna say
More punches.
Yep.
Punch card will go way up if you're punching for recycling and glass.
But you still only need the same amount of money.
But by not charging for recycling, you're also drawing people to the recycling station, which means they'll also bring bags of trash and buy punch tickets.
And not to mention, everybody's buying stuff online now, so we're recycling.
That's true.
It is way up the balance.
Um, I got, I got, I got, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, in, in, in this presentation, you were able to demonstrate tonnage that's being taken away. Have you done any kind of study that's comparative to the punches that we're receiving and, and because we're only charging punches for, uh, mainstream?
Yep.
And, right, mainstream, and what's the other one?
Compost?
Uh, CND, CND.
CND.
So CND, so between CND and mainstream?
Uh, municipal solid waste is MSW.
And this, MSW, okay, but MSW is, is one of those things we pay for, right? Okay, and we pay for CND. So if we look at the tonnage that is hauled on those two items, is it accurate for those two items? The, the, the number of punches we're getting, it's supposed, the, the
Is it covering the cost? The punches, is the punch cards covering the cost of the tonnage that's being taken away, is what he's asking?
Yes.
Yes, and then some, because it's covering, covering part of the cost of the glass and the recycling, but not enough.
Well, right now it is. It's covering it correctly because we adjusted it.
Yeah, but we have a deficit.
Yes, and that's
Is that from before?
Yeah, there was a cumulative deficit.
Okay.
I gave a spreadsheet, I think before you got here, Kelly, I showed the surplus and the deficit, surplus and the deficit for like fifteen years and how it accumulated.
I knew that there was, we're still running, okay, we're still working towards paying that deficit off.
So, yeah, there's a thirty-five thousand dollar, or it may be more this year. Um, we'll be getting our numbers, and you'll see them on November twentieth, which makes our net position Dave and I always kinda talk about the net position and whether we actually have seventy-five thousand in the bank in reserves, but we'll have that discussion again.
Um, so, so the statement was made that, um, if we start charging for recycling, people won't recycle. Right? That's an assumption, first of all. I'm not sure that in today's world, how significant that would be, first of all. Secondly, if they don't recycle, then it goes in the trash, and then, and then it ends up in the bag that gets charged for.
Yep.
So, I don't know.
It, it depends. You'd have to have a, um, if you were establishing a recycling charge, it would have to be at a rate, half or less than half of what trash would be. That would be the only way the incentive would work. So you'd have a bunch of different tickets that say, here's what you have for this, and this is what you have for that. We talked about, well, first of all, my first question is, when you mentioned that, and I was glad when I heard that we were gonna go out to bid, we signed a contract with Alba, but that has a, that, that wasn't forever.
Yep.
What, is that coming up for bid?
It is coming up for bid in February.
Okay, so, so the three towns, us, I don't, I, I'm not worried about the district, I'm worried about us. So, Weathersfield, Redding, and West Windsor as a group will go out to bid?
For recycling.
Not for trash?
Historically, it's always gone to the solid waste district. They go, they do the bid for us.
Well, if that was true, then we'd have two different vendors, and we don't.
So what happens is, we put out a cumulative bid for each town, and we get bids back per town. They just do the process for us.
Were you here when, when our solid waste went out to bid? Because Casella and Matt Friesley was Alba, was here.
That was for recycling, not solid waste.
You have bids for each project.
Yep.
We, we accepted Alba for both of them. We could've done Casella and one, and Alba.
So my question is, when will they expire and we will rebid the whole project?
February.
So we will rebid on our own, not in the twenty-three-town district?
Yep, recycling.
And waste?
So the twenty-three-town solid waste district, they just put out the bid, and it includes our town. So, when the bids come back, Casella will give a price for all twenty-three towns individually, and then you'll also get a price from Alba for all twenty-three towns.
Oh, so they peeled each other off? So they decided you go, you stay? I didn't know that. So, next question. We have talked about here in the past, about when we had an issue with the people that work at the transfer station, and we wanted to take more pressure off them with CND, and, you know, all of us said, we'll just charge more punch tickets for that. Is it possible, because I, I'm sitting here looking at this, and I'm saying, wait a minute, cause only like two years ago, the recyc- there's, there's a few things that stick out to me like a sore thumb. The recycling cost from the amount that we generated was only sixty thousand the last time we looked. All of a sudden now, whatever's going on, we're talking about it moving up to seventy-two thousand. CND, the last time I looked, was like, I don't know, fifty or sixty thousand, now it's gone up to sixty-nine thousand. The first question that we had a couple, like, last year or the year before was, what if we just did not do CND? We just said, cause we tried to do that with big trucks and contractors pulling in, saying that now you can only use the pickup. So thought one is, what if we just don't do it? Thought two is, if we're gonna do it, maybe we should charge double.
We could charge more for CND, and that's not a bad idea. I wouldn't suggest get rid of it, because CND is currently subsidizing recycling, so when we pull CND out, we lose the money that we generate to offset recycling.
But not if it's keeping to reach up here, like, it seems to be escalating. It's getting a little more out of whack. If you're telling us that we have a thirty thousand dollar deficit, you just sent us its bottom, which you did kind of very quietly, on number eight. It's, it's, it's very quiet here, you put that last number in, you gotta raise your punch tickets by a doll- a dollar eighteen.
Just so you know, recycling is going up because of the volume, more people, there, more people have more recycling because they're ordering so much online. Everything comes in boxes, so that's where your tonnage is going up.
Well
CND, people were stuck in their homes during COVID, they decided to rebuild everything, so now they get the money and they're rebuilding it.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't see it that way. I see it where either the hauler is charging us more to get rid of it, and then he's having to pay more at the receiver. I don't think, I don't
That's exactly what's going on.
Yes.
Um, our pull charges also go up, and it wasn't a dollar twenty-five, it was forty-three cents that we would need to increase.
Well, I'm looking, what's, what's our ticket price now?
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five went up last year.
And, and a three-point-two percent increase with ticket to four thirty-eight.
I'd say we don't, I, didn't, didn't you want, want my bottom line? Cause it's getting late, what is it, like, an hour difference? It's already like nine forty-one. So I say, for advice, that we raise the CND half again more, and that will bring everything in line, and don't raise the, the ticket fees.
I, 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 I agree with where you're going, except for having knowledge o- over there. Of, of, I don't know how much CND you take over there, I don't think a lot, like, a little metal here, and stuff like that, but how, how are we actually gonna generate the punches?
A lot of, a lot of times, I hate to say this, but when it's busy, there's some people that take advantage of the situation.
Of course they do.
They just drive in, they dump, and they leave.
Yeah.
So, we're losing some revenue right there.
So here's what I suggest. When you, you and I went right at it about, about the, uh, garbage, and I didn't like that idea about having a cheaper, is there still a different ticket for garbage?
Com- compost.
Compost.
Whatever. It's, it's a different ticket, right?
Yeah, it's a dollar.
Well, then maybe we should have a different ticket for CND. That way, that gets it right out of it. Says you need a special CND ticket to dump CND. Yep, different color.
Or, another way that you can do it is you could do a special sticker for CND. Or another way that you can do it is you could do a special sticker for C and D. This way you don't have to go to downers. And we just take C and, the cost of C and D, we divide it by the cost of.
I don't see an, I see a, I see a horror show over there, so that's all cool.
People just get shot with a little sticker detail.
Yep, the, the way out of this, I'm telling you, is you either have like a, you have a green or a red ticket and that's it for C and D.
You can keep the same ticket and the same punches, just charge more.
Charge something.
And with, and recycling, you don't need your own special recycling card if you charge, decide to charge.
Nope.
Charge one punch per person, no matter what they're dumping, have, have help.
Okay, but we, okay, but you also brought up another problem of people getting in there and dumping without paying for it. How are you going to fix that too?
You can't.
It, you have to have more help, or you have to have more help, but then you have times where you don't need more help, so how do you fix it?
Put a gate up.
That's a long-term decision.
Put, put a gate up so somebody has to open the gate to go up there.
What if we?
They can't even go up there and not have people throw yogurt in the damn cardboard container.
Yeah.
We need to keep this simpler for them, for the work, for the people that work there. A different color is the answer. That way the cost of buying that different color is more automatically right there, it's out of the air.
And that won't change the mindset of the people that are asking for the punches to start with. Because they're kind of, they're kind of gauging, that's what I'm trying to get at. They're, they're on a map where they're gauging, this is a punch, this is two punches, this is four punches.
Takes that all out of them.
That doesn't change if you just, if you change the color of the ticket and charge more for that ticket. Charge more for C and D.
I have two, two things. If you try to charge people a ticket for recycling, they'll just wait for like two months and then come with a whole truckload.
I'm talking about recycling though, I'm talking about C and D.
That was just the, that was going back to the recycling comment though, um, that, that Ray made.
But we, we're kind of moving on past that. I, because I, I think, I, I don't think anybody wants to start charging for recycling yet.
No.
But I, I, I think you're right. What do you think of that idea, different colored sticker?
I really think that this is not the place to have the discussion, actually, I'm sorry.
The punch, the punch ticket.
I think it's a great idea. I think we should brainstorm.
Yeah.
And push it to the committee. Let, let's say this is your concern, this is a list of our concerns, come up with what you have to solutions. If you guys add your solutions to that list.
You know, I, I, thank you for that because I think you're right. There's three towns involved in this now, it's not just our decision.
I think if you guys have brainstorm ideas, Dave has ideas, you have ideas, jot them down, send it to Brandon.
I just did.
Bring it to the committee.
Okay, okay. So we, so we had some ideas, you got all that.
The purpose of this meeting was one, to introduce you to the budget that we're going to be discussing with the committee.
We got to know it well.
And then to kind of take some of the ideas we're discussing and, and talk about them with the committee. And then on November twentieth, we'll bring it back with feedback from the committee and then we can potentially get to a decision.
Okay, that sounds good.
We do have to remember this.
Now we'll see if I can find my, uh, my agenda, yeah, my agenda, where's my agenda? So we're done with, uh, that storm damage update?
We're done with number seventeen.
Yeah, that's where, that's where we are.
Nineteen, number nineteen.
Uh, two seconds here. We have three invitation for bids that have been advertised, one for a temporary bridge, one for the little escutney bridge engineering, and one for the upper falls covered bridge engineering. I talked to FEMA and I talked to the state, and we need the board to waive the purchasing policy so that we can move forward with the, to fix the Perkinsville dry hydrant, um, which is five thousand eight hundred dollars. We've solicited quotes, Ray received a verbal quote, a written quote, a promise to receive a quote. We only have, we only have one written quote.
There's a big flaw in our purchasing policy because after you require three quotes or a certain amount of money or up to a certain amount of money, I cannot force a contractor to give you a quote. It's different by entires or something that's durable. I can get free prices, but I can't force my Todd to give you a price of what it's going to cost to fix something.
But, but what does the policy say? I don't want to do it now because we're just going to make this motion to do this, but, but, but I believe it has to meet a threshold in order to waive the, I think it's ten thousand dollars.
It's, so between five and ten, it requires three quotes.
Okay.
And the situation that we're in is.
That's okay.
FEMA won't reimburse us if our poli, if you don't waive the policy. Or if we don't get three quotes because our policy requires it. And we want, we need to move on with this project, so.
No, I'm, and I, I don't want to change the policy. These things, these things work.
Yeah, but are we, yeah, but are we changing the policy or are we just waiving it for this?
Yes, that's what happens. Uh, uh, when, when the circumstances warrant, which is we just had a request with, with this. So they did their due diligence. They went to different people, two people, uh, one person chose to write in and do the, do the job, and the other two kind of didn't. So you went to five people, so that satisfies that. So, no, I don't want to change the policy. We've done it plenty of times where we waive the policy specifically for this and award that because one complied. Did you, did you say you had another person comply? So they didn't give you a number?
I went to five people, one person gave me a written quote, one person gave me a verbal, one person showed up and gave me anything.
What was the verbal, what was the verbal quote?
He, he said he had a verbal quote, he had a quote, and he threw out some numbers. I said, write it down, send it to me in email.
Oh. So he never expressed the dollar amount?
He did, but there were just random numbers for this.
Was the dollar amount close to what we have written?
It was, it was close, but I didn't, I honestly didn't listen all the way because I told him to write it.
Okay, but you, but you reached out to five, basically one is responding. So we, so we need a motion to, to, uh.
Motion to waive the, uh, what is, what is the exact purchasing policy?
Requirement to obtain three estimates.
For the, for the request that was given to us for the repair of the Perkinsville dry hydrant.
And then to.
And to award that estimate at a cost of no more than five thousand eight hundred dollars to Daniel's Construction.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Is that motion worded correctly for you, Brandon?
Yeah, that'll be perfect. And Nicole, we just need it verbatim for the minutes because this will be documented for reimbursement to FEMA.
Did it, did it specifically say that we're waiving the, the policy requiring three bids? Did it, did it actually say that?
Three quotes.
Three quotes, uh, yeah. That we're wa, that's what we're waiving, is the need for three quotes, right?
Yes, and then to award the.
And, and yes, I just want to make sure that that waving, uh, because I didn't quite catch that the way you worded it.
And I, and I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure that we didn't do our job. So I don't know why FEMA was worried about it because he happened to reach out to those, which, which.
The policy states you have to have three written quotes. If you don't, you're under one.
Okay.
That's, that's the issue.
But, but I, but I really think that, that you reached out to more than what was required, which was three, and that they failed to respond. The only thing written that you need to do is write down that you note asked for the request from those five people.
The, well, that's what the policy states.
Yeah.
But that's what the minutes, that's what the minutes are going to reflect. That we're aware that five people were contacted, we got one back, we made a decision based on that. And we're waiving that policy, uh, for that purpose.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's all they'll need for the.
Okay, if you're confident with that, then I, I am as well. We have a motion in a second on the floor to waive the policy and, and approve the award to Daniel's Construction, uh, for the project.
Make sure that it's in the, um, Nicole, make sure that it's for the Perkinsville dry fire hydrant. Or, no, it's not dry, right? It's actually.
Perkinsville hydro, electric hydrant.
Yeah, so it's not a dry hydrant at all. Get, get that down. It's, it's, well, but, but it's not a dry hydrant.
Okay, so any further discussion on the motion? Eric Nannall in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next up is Village Wastewater Committee's, uh, second reading, continue. Where's everybody at with that?
Did you, so I'm, 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 I'm reading the, the thing that you gave us, Brandon, and it says the engineers have a thirty percent report completed?
Yes.
What did they do to reach thirty percent? What does thirty percent mean?
I don't have the scope of work in front of me, I can get that for the next meeting.
Yeah, they haven't submitted that because they're waiting for us to form the committee.
Okay, so, but they've done thirty percent of something?
They've done thirty percent of the wastewater feasibility study.
So.
There's, there's a scope of work that makes up that thirty percent.
Is, so is it Escutney and Perkinsville, the villages?
Yes.
They've completed something to the level of thirty percent?
Correct.
What exactly then would they be expecting any committee to do? Because they're saying, well, we don't want to do anything until we have a committee. What does that, why are they, what, what is so important of a committee, of anybody, that would stop them from continuing the remaining seventy percent of what they're doing?
I don't think they're, they need to stop. I think they're just at a stopping point for somebody to review it. They could come to the select board or we could form a committee and they could review it or they could just continue on.
That's what I see him asking here.
But, but how, but how in the world would the, um, would that mean that the committee or us up here would modify the scope of work that they're doing or by commenting on it? I don't know, I don't want to do that. I want them to be doing the job that they were hired to do.
And, and they are, and they're letting us know that the thirty percent report that was required in the contract is written. Do we want it to go to a committee or do we want them to bring it to us?
Well, I don't think.
Does that sum it up about right?
But I don't think it's a secret. I would say, I would, I would say both, but, 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 but more to the point, I, I don't understand why they're, I'm, I'm reading this. They're waiting for a committee to be formed before submitting to thirty percent of the report. Why would that happen? They want the committee to do something to the work that they've done, which I don't think is good?
I think they do a presentation of the report to somebody, either the committee or to the select board or to me, and then.
But that would create a judgment.
Maybe.
It would, it would, up to, the purpose of presenting the report is to get public input on the report.
But how would it not be better if it was done way more than thirty percent to?
If that was just in the contract, it was, it was the way that was all set up.
It's a little strange.
Jan Marie?
I suspect, I suspect, based on, we may be at a point of wanting some public input or doing surveys or something to see if there's a need for this. Because I don't think, I know no one's contacted me and said, would you, would you go out into a sewer project, you know, or do a problem or anything like that? And I don't know anybody that gave contact with it. So I suspect that it may be, you know, it will be a team and we try to hand off something on them. But, um, you know, get local input onto what is needed. Because that, I'm pretty sure with part of this sort of project, the need is really clear. And that would be, to be interested in what you can do with this. Just so you have some of that feedback.
August?
Um, page three of the agreement states, um, at the top of the page, paragraph A, prepare a draft feasibility study report, thirty percent draft. So that's, that's what they're referring to. It's a draft feasibility study report, so they've got it. Um, I'd say it probably behooves, um, all parties, you know, when the town of Weathersfield to get a copy of that. They could, they could come to the select board, even while we're in the progress of forming the committee, they could come and brief those interested in being on the committee, on the select board, so that you, you don't lose, so you know what they've done, what we've paid for, and see what they've got.
And that's, see, that's what I think they're asking for here is they're waiting to, to see if the committee's going to get formed, which is, according to the engineers, is a local decision and is not a requirement to the project. Uh, but if the town decides, and if the town decides not to form a committee, the engineers will send the drafts over for us. I, I, I think, for, for me, communicate to them that we're in the process still of forming a committee.
Yep.
We have names for the committee, but we're, we're writing a scope of, 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 um, a process for them to follow. Uh, so I'd say, uh, uh, agree with August, let's have them come in and talk to all of us at this point. And, and we'll, we'll get the committee formed through, once we get through our, the next item on here, or it's the second reading of the waste, which is what this is, second reading.
Like, I think this board's really busy, and I think those discussions take an hour, hour and a half.
Oh, really?
Why having the committee focus on this was the recommendation? Because if we have, if we're going to hear a full report and that's going to go through several meetings, we have a lot of other business that's far more important, in my opinion, to get through than to discuss this feasibility study.
Okay.
It could go to the planning commission alternatively, um, you know, or.
As you said, it's going to be an hour, hour and a half, did you want to waste your time in the meeting and do that? I heard the committee, listen to all that, and then you get the report to you later.
We don't want to rush through it either. We don't want to take up two hours unless we're going to start holding special meetings.
How about this? Otter Creek has thirty percent of this done. Why don't they leave off a few copies up in the office and those people that are interested could pick one up?
Okay.
Then you don't take up any town, any meeting time or anything else. Here's what I'm a little bit nervous about, that Otter Creek would, would, um, the committee would be formed, four or five people, stick up their hand and say, I'm on. And they all say, yes, I think there's a need. How in the world could Otter Creek or any other engineering firms base their next step on that? Rather than, they are going to have to go at some moment in time, and I don't know whether this is good news or bad news or any news, they're going to have to go to every house in the villages and look up whatever septic system that they have.
Yeah.
That would be the only way that a true sense of a system, the, the, the need base would be coming up. Because you and I have already talked about this. You called up both Springfield and Windsor and asked about the ability for them to take the villages. Their answer was no unless significant upgrades were made.
Well, they would, they would need to be sure that we'd have a number of residents that would hook on so that the investment would be feasible.
So the, but, so in the alter, that, that meant pumping. That meant pumping the wastewater to those two of them.
Well, I, I, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds of what it all is going to be at this point in time. Right now we've got, the actual item on the agenda is, uh, the Village Wastewater Committee Second Reading. So we have this note that's attached to this. For now, I think, yes, a couple of copies upstairs, but I don't think that's going to, I think the, the report's going to have to be given to the committee. That's what you're recommending, whether it's the planning commission or here or wherever, but not here because we don't have time. So, so, so let's get some copies upstairs so people can start reading it. But we got to get through the, the Village Wastewater Policy Second Reading. Has that, has everybody gone over that?
Yes.
So, so here's my question that I gave to Brandon, not question, my comment that I gave to Brandon, uh, like a week ago or more. So we have a committee, I guess, going to be established, and a policy dealing with that committee. So there's a project, which happens to be wastewater for the villages. So there's a beginning, there's a middle, and I suggested there was an end. So this, the engineering firm is hired for a specific task. It will start, it will go on, and it will end. So is there any words in here in the policy where the committee will disband, the project's over?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so organization, section two, C?
Yep.
Any appointment to fill a vacancy?
Duties and responsibilities, um, C?
Yep, uh, any appointment to fill a vacancy shall expire upon the completion of the wastewater feasibility study.
So my only other comment to that would be that this is not going to take an enormous amount of time. Has Otter Creek given you an estimate about what it's going to take to finish this? It's going to get done this year?
Probably take another year.
Really?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
They have a lot of data to complete, they're going to open every single house and get your septic system information.
If it was me, I'd say, no, I'm not giving it, but that's just me. I mean, they don't have, they don't have a right to collect it, but, um, so, um, I'm wondering out loud if this is a short-term, I know of no other policy in the town that goes on to this length to do this for that task. It's kind of like having a committee set up for highway to go buy a dump truck.
The eighteen seventy-nine house went on for ten years.
Yeah, but I, but, but that kind of dissolved for, for, I think, for different reasons. Yeah, but the, but the, but the building is still there, I think that.
Another option too, I mean, we could do this policy or we could have some kind of a task force.
I don't know, it just seems like an awful lot of words for, for, for me.
But we're already in second reading.
Yeah, I think, I think this policy creates.
That doesn't mean anything to me.
Disbands a committee, and those parameters are outlined in this policy.
So does the policy also, uh, uh, evaporate when the committee is disbanded?
When the wastewater feasibility study is completed, the policy is null and void, because the policy is no longer-
Not, not, that's different from having the committee disbanded.
I mean, we'd have a, a policy that doesn't do anything, so-
Oh, no, all those words are still in there.
For, for example, the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse went on for ten years, it got to a point where they were done doing what they were doing, and there was a vote to disband, and they were done. Because unless the board wanted to give them more responsibility, that their task was complete.
I'm not aware that we have a policy dealing with the eighteen seventy-nine building.
Not yet.
There was a committee formed by the board.
But, but, but that's different. It, but, I don't, show me the policy that deals specifically with the eighteen seventy-nine building.
I don't think there was one. I think the board developed the committee, appointed eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse members, and then-
So we're talking about apples and oranges here. We're talking about a committee with a policy.
Okay.
That's why you need a policy, because the policy outlines the parameters of the committee.
And it's-
And provides a start date and an end date.
On the last page.
Well, and, and the agreement had many, many responsibilities, and this provides safeguards for the town.
And if Dave is concerned about a, uh, a, a, an ending to the policy, just where do you want that to be?
It already is there. It's at the end.
No, no, it says it disbands the committee. It doesn't say that the policy is, I don't even know what the words it used, because it takes-
Wendy, where are you talking about that it's at the end?
On the very, on page forty-seven of one twenty-four.
The foregoing policy is hereby adopted by the selectors of the town, whether it's Phil Vermont, blah, 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 and it's effect of this day until amended or repealed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, I don't, see, in order to have a policy, you gotta go warn it, you gotta have three readings and everything. I just don't think that you can put a word in here saying, okay, it's all over, goodbye. I'm not aware of that.
The, the board would have to, once the committee is dissolved, the board would take up the policy.
And repeal it.
And repeal it.
Under, under seven effect, though the last thing that was said. Um, I, I was actually gonna go where Dave just said we couldn't go, which is to just put under severability that, 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 that the policy ends with the, the completion of the, of the study.
I don't know, we can, I don't, you'd have to ask somebody like VLCT or whatever, because town policies are different.
I'll look into that. Otherwise, are the changes, do the changes reflect the recommendations from the board from meeting on ten twenty-one?
Um-
I don't find a problem.
The, the, I, I, where did the three members come from in, in Organization B?
Says at least.
Yeah, I know, at least three, it, being changed from at least five.
That's something that, I mean, we could do three or five. I think I actually just put that in there.
Is the committee gonna make any decisions?
No, it's advisory only.
Correct, so I don't, I don't wanna limit the amount of people that might wanna become involved to them.
It doesn't, it's at least, at least, it can be above three, but at least-
Yeah, I just, so that's why I asked, do they make any-
But that means you set it at a low threshold.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it said the committee shall have five members, and I think I put at least three members, didn't put a end of members that could join.
Okay. And, and if they, if they can't really take any action, then they, they don't really need a quorum, or they don't have any voting authority anyway, right? Of, of, just within themselves based on any recommendations they might make.
Yep, that's why I asked. And then, wasn't the first line, the committee's advisory, did you change that into red somewhere?
Yeah, that's in here. I saw that, yeah. Yeah, eggs, an advisory committee.
Yep. Yep.
Anne Marie?
Yeah, I question Lily on page two, develop community outreach.
What, what section are we in? I'm sorry?
D.
D. Of, of what section, three, four?
It's, uh, section four, yeah.
Section, section four D, community outreach, okay.
So they're gonna develop and create a community outreach program to inform affected residents of this, or these villages, so it counts almost like the community's going to organize the villages to get their feedback, like, hey, that should be part of the engineering stuff.
But there's no, but there's no change to that section. We didn't change anything there. Is there something you want changed there?
Yes, a question.
Well, I think the agreement gives that to us as a responsibility, so that'd be pretty easy to reference.
But it is, if it gives a responsibility to that, it's probably bigger than the volunteer. And they either want surveys done, it costs money, you want letters or postcards sent out inviting people to come, you know, which costs money, or probably has papers, which costs money. And, you know, and this is advisability, this is, that's the kind of stuff that the engineering firm-
Oh, I see, you don't, so you don't, you don't think that that, it's section A, D L, D A should be there?
I have one concern about that.
Yeah, I think that should go to the engineer.
Go ahead, Wendy.
I thought that that was pertaining to, um, people were concerned, like in other things that we've been involved in, that the information would get out. So it'd be like on, uh, the Weathersfield around town or whatever it is on Facebook. I think it was more like that they wanted to make sure that there were ways of maybe putting a notice up somewhere that if you're interested in this, or, you know, I, I thought there was a concern that people wouldn't know what was going on, and it was more to make sure, I don't think it has to be cost, they, they don't have to spend money, but certain ways of, you know, if they put it out on a front porch or-
Well, I mean, if the, if the engineering firm's gonna hold a meeting, a hearing on each town also gets community access. Sure, you know, committee with advertising public or form or something, say, you know, come to the meeting in, uh, you know, Perkinsville. Another company helping study on this, such and such a date, you know, the engineering firm. And that's sort of to capture everybody, because the last thing you want is people to be taking like surprise, like, oh my God, they're gonna make me go up to the sewer system, you know, and
Well, but no, that's-
Don't know anything about this right now.
Well, I, but I think that's, and I thi, and I, and I think that's exactly the point. People don't know anything about this right now. It says, develop a prepared community outreach program to inform the affected residents of a wastewater feasibility study, and receive comments, inputs, and concerns based on, at this point, thirty percent of what they've done. So you, so you would, you, the committee would review the, whatever the thirty percent report is.
Yep.
And then you'd hold a meeting at the Grange or at the eighteen seventy-nine building.
Those issues have been done. When we had, one of the reasons that the trustees disbanded, I told you, we sent letters out and cost money, posters and stuff. Telling everybody, it's the annual meeting of the village of Perkinsville, not a single person getting one.
Okay, so, so how are you proposing that, 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 that this community outreach?
This is not our responsibility, this is the engineering firm.
They're, they're all over is asking for the, to really come with word of mouth and talk to your neighbors.
Yeah, word of mouth.
They're not asking you to send, they're doing a scope study, so they, they announce all these special meetings.
Can I respond?
The committee's not ready to go door to door, it's, it's voluntary.
Go ahead.
Now, going door to door is asking a lot of committees to say, hey, you have to do it, because it's one of-
I went door to door when I did the petitions to remove zoning, and I got a lot of, I got a lot of responses. Brandon, go ahead.
So Anne Marie, the committee determines what the, what the outreach program will look like. So if the committee doesn't want posters, don't make it a part of the community outreach program. It will put an agenda item on the agenda and discuss what the community outreach program will be. And if it's just like social media, you know, talking to neighbors, it can be whatever the committee wants it to look like. Um, now, I don't know if the select board should approve that outreach program or not, or should we allow them to create the program and avoid with it?
I'm taking it Anne Marie's here, cause she doesn't want that to be a part of this, and, and-
She said three or four times that she thinks it's the job of the Otter Creek not that.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm not gonna disrespect that comment. I, I'm listening to that.
I just want her to know that she doesn't need to develop postcards and stuff. Um, it doesn't say that.
I'm not sure in any case of what the, what either body would do. They're gonna, you know, either a committee or the engineering firm. They're gonna walk up, can you, I, I'm John Doe, can you tell me what kind of s- septic system you have? I'm with Anne Marie on this one. They're gonna say, why? Why do you wanna know? They're gonna say, well, and the minute they say, well, we're with Otter Creek, we've been hired by the town to undertake this study, some resident's gonna say, what? Why me? I know, you're shaking your, yeah, that's exactly what's gonna happen, because I'm pretending to be one of those residents. Yes, you, you mean the town, what is the town gonna do to me now?
Hey, now I got a big brickboard and sewer, I don't-
As opposed to, the town has done nothing.
So should we strike D A?
I think you have to review the, um, agreement and the responsibilities that we signed. And I also think one of the references in the beginning is from the state of Vermont, which is organizing village wastewater solutions, a workbook for community leaders. And things you can do to start, there's a whole list of, um, well-informed recommendations for committees, um.
Nothing, nothing against you personally, but you're one person of five people that are interested, maybe the other four aren't interested in that.
Well, the easy answer is gonna be, no, there's nothing wrong with mine, and I have a, I have an acre of land, and I have my own septic system, and I'm good. That, you know, that's the really easy way out of the hole, the hole.
But, and there's gonna be a lot less friction if they're talking to Anne Marie than they are the engineers from the firm.
That's, that's what Otter Creek wants. They don't wanna do the dirty work. They want the residents that are located in the villages to go gather research for them, because I'm sure that this isn't, this ain't the first rodeo for an engineering firm to go into this. Or with water for that matter, because when people have their own wells, they're gonna say, I don't need water, I got it. So that's what Otter Creek wanted. I remember the guy saying that, we need a face, we need some other people to help us. Yeah, okay.
August hit the nail on the head, as far as looking for contract to see what Otter Creek's supposed to do. You can't believe it's in here that they're doing all the committee outreach.
Okay.
These guys are supposed to assist.
Oh, you didn't need to put it in the policy after all?
Let, let me look at the, um, the third, at the third reading, after I do research. I'll make the decision to either keep that or strike it and give it to the engineers.
Okay, is there, any, any other things that you've gone over that you'd like to see changed?
I'm the only one that just seem, you know, it seems like it's just sent to there, it seems manageable, just talk to your neighbors and stuff, it's just weird. You know, dealing with people and meetings and stuff, why? There's different reaction, you know, there's different, and this isn't touchy. It's like the sidewalks, you know, it's gonna-
No, it's different than sidewalks.
It's a lot more expensive.
It's, it's, yeah, you know, it's gonna cost me money, if I, I'm gonna make me do that, you know, that kind of stuff, so, you know. And to make the point persons, you know, so they know somebody local that they can find, you know, and, you know, a person can say, well, this is what's happening, and they're just looking at, doing the, you know. Anyway, they can talk and talk to them, but to actually go out and contact everybody and let it be known, it's not the committee's, you know, not the-
Okay.
I'm understanding what Anne Marie says, because if, if you're gonna have to have a, a folder that says, I went to-
Yeah.
Thirty-two, you know, Rouse Lane, and, and this is what I found, you're gonna have to mark that down. And then you're gonna have to mark down the, you know, thirty-one, thirty-two, all the residents.
And the comments, and track the comments.
You're gonna have to chart all this and gather, and that, you're right, I didn't even think of that, where the, it's gonna be, not, not postage and stamps. Somebody's gonna have to assemble something and have a report.
We're, we're in an odd pickle here, because they've got a thirty percent draft study. Really, it'd be great to have a couple of copies. I'd like a PDF so I could actually read it.
Right.
Because, uh, Anne Marie is correct, the, there are a lot of responsibilities here, you know, I'm on page, page one. And the, the engineer has a lot of responsibilities that are nuanced, and I say nuanced, because confirm study service area, determine basis for potential future, future wastewater needs, uh, prepare for and attend kickoff meeting with project team. So we, we don't really know what they've accomplished, so we need to find, what, what did they do? And then what are their responsibilities to us?
They got, they got paid a little.
So, so I think that-
Didn't get that.
I think we could probably, uh, I, I would motion to, to table this for, or, that's not the right motion. I, I think, I think we need to have that draft feasibility study before we can move forward with, with further discussion.
There has to be a motion, though the hearing is opened, there has to be a motion to continue this second reading of this policy to a date certain.
But do we, do, do we need to continue the second reading, or, or can we continue the third reading?
Well, if you go to the third reading, then it can't be changed ever again. So you're gonna have, the, the third reading is the final thing.
Okay, all right, that, well, that's what I was, that's why I was asking.
That would be the correct motion.
To continue the second one.
Continue the, the hearing on the policy regarding whatever the wastewater-
Shall I, shall I go ahead and make, make, I would-
Second reading though, right, has to be in there.
We're in the second reading right now.
Continue the second.
Yes.
I would motion that we continue the second reading, um, to provide us time to obtain the, the PDF in a timely fashion, at least four days before the next, um, meeting of the select board, to publicly make that available and to allow us time to make better edits, um, in consideration.
So if that's happening, then when are our scheduled meetings?
Uh, November twentieth is the next one.
That's to go to a date. So incorporated in the motion, you have to make the second reading to a date.
Sixteenth.
So will we have copies of the wastewater policy by, in a reasonable amount of time, by November twentieth?
Yeah.
That's the question. Or does it move to the first meeting in December?
I think November twentieth will be fine, because if it moves to December, we're starting to push everything out too far.
That's the only question, so-
And, and I can, I can also work with Brandon to, to review the, uh-
Before we get too deep in discussion, do I hear a second on this motion? And Anne Marie had her hand up.
If selectmen are gonna review the draft of the review, I actually see no need for a committee in the end.
Oh, no, I think the review is of the contract. Is, isn't that what you're talking about?
Yes, the contract has to be reviewed, um, and the, and the draft study.
Only thirty percent of it.
It's only thirty.
But the thing is, if you started this whole review of this policy, first of all, I question, do you need the policy? Don't we need just a little committee, because it says the purpose and mission is just to find out what the engineering committee's doing. Tell selectmen, give them a report, like the town manager's report, this is the wastewater report, and go away. Selectmen can talk about it, or say, well, I think they should get on the ball, or be faster, or slower, or something, you know, it makes no decision. So I, first of all, I see this being worn out, this bureaucracy, where it's just a wastewater committee. And it's hard enough to get people on all these other committees, how are you gonna be dragging people off the street to be on the wastewater committee? If it's gonna be so bureaucratic, that's all I can say. It's just a very simple committee.
Was, was, was the language from the contract that, that, that was giving the committee the communication and decision-making authority? Or was that something that was put in the policy?
It's advisory only now. It wasn't before, it could make his decisions before, um-
Was that, is that in this policy or was that in the contract?
I, I'm not sure, Mike.
Um, that was, uh, in the contract, um, page two, one, just one element, was owner shall make decisions and carry out its responsibilities in a timely manner. Um, and then there's another one which does, says that the owner will designate a representative to make decisions on behalf of the town. So th- that's why we have to be cautious, because this agreement has some legally binding language.
Yeah.
There's nothing informal about it.
And, and that's where the, that's where the committee and, and this policy came from, was that language?
To clarify, there's obviously, uh, a desire for a wastewater committee study. But the engineering company requires, um, owner responsibilities. Um, a committee formed to work on this has to have the parameters of their work clarified, so it's not in conflict with the agreement, and that we can obtain the final study. But you have to have, uh, if, if people are interested in finding the solution, you have to have people who are willing to volunteer to work on a- But you have to have, uh, if, if people are interested in finding the solution, you have to have people who are willing to volunteer to work on a committee to assist the town and the engineers.
Which I thought we had.
And it's also a best practice from the state of Vermont, is to form a wastewater committee.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm all about that, but I, I was just addressing what she was saying about having the policy. But the reason for the policy was the language in the contract, it was necessary.
Yes.
Do we have to watch ourselves too because this is money that we're getting repaid for, correct?
We do.
It's like a grant.
According to the engineers, this committee is not required, like August was saying, it is a best practice. From my perspective, I don't think the select board has the time to listen to all of this. We wanna listen to the final report and set a meeting aside for that, but.
Well, I just wanna make sure they're not gonna take all the money and say, no, you can't get it because you didn't do what we asked you to do.
The other part is what August read by the contract, so they expect the decision maker. And I'd like this to go somewhere. So that it's, it, it's not one of these other studies that we do that says, hmm, I don't know, it got off track somehow. And we didn't, and, and we didn't, and we didn't think that that was it. And that it might offer, while, while it may not offer a municipal waste system, it might offer the residents to get together on their own, maybe form separate groups or whatever to try to fix, if, if they have a problem.
Yep.
So, I don't know, I just, when August read that about, that, that, that contract that's signed expects a designated decision maker or something, okay, okay, engineering firm, what decisions do you think we're gonna make legally? And I don't want, I wouldn't want Anne Marie to have that on your, on you, that you made a decision that was bound to a contract. Yeah.
We're gonna send the bill to you.
That's funny. Yeah, I don't know.
Let's move on.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor.
Uh, so, well, real quick though, the changes that have been made that are highlighted in red, is, is everybody okay with the rest of those?
Yes.
I'll set there, okay, so you have an answer on that?
Yep.
You look really tired. Like you're ready to go to sleep.
Well, I'm thirteen hours in at this point, so.
I get you, okay. So, so we have a motion on the floor, did, did we have a second to that motion? I don't recall that, Kelly did?
Yes, she did.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to continue the second reading to eleven twenty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your update.
Alright, I just have a couple of quick updates, we have two new employees. Our highway department is fully staffed, our transfer station is fully staffed. We welcome David Picknell to the transfer station. He's been the temporary employee over there who agreed to come on permanently. And Evan McClure to the highway department from the town of Heartland since twenty eighteen. Um, he's been on the highway department there and we're very happy to, to welcome him to our highway department. He's a Perkinsville resident, um, so his commute will be much shorter. Um, and then, of course, you know, with a local highway worker, you have a better response time in the need of how it worked during storms and so forth.
Good night, Anne Marie, thank you.
We have three projects that are complete, the Upper Falls Covered Bridge Project is complete. The propane tank has been buried and connected to the generator, so Brookfield will actually be here Wednesday to start that up. Um, and that project is done. The radar sign has been installed in Perkinsville. Um, so there's currently a, Ray, you guys did that this morning, right?
Yeah.
Um, we have four policies under review. Um, the personnel policy, purchasing policy, Martin Memorial Hall Rules and Regulations and eighteen seventy-nine Schoolhouse Rules and Regulations. And we have four upcoming holidays. Veterans Day, so the town office will be closed on Friday. Veterans Day is on Saturday. The transfer station will be closed on Saturday. Thanksgiving is coming up and the town office will be closed on November twenty-third, that's a Thursday. Christmas is coming. Um, I, I can't believe it's already this time of the year.
Seven Fridays.
It seems like this year just flew by, um, but Christmas is on Monday this year. Um, so we will be closed on twelve twenty-five. And then, as you know, Christmas and New Year's always fall on the same day, so New Year's will be on a Monday, which is kinda cool because it's the first day of the week. Won't be closed on Monday, the, the first.
Really, that means I gotta play on Sunday night.
So those, those are all my updates for this week.
Um, I can, I, I, I'll just throw this out there. Veterans Day, closing down the transfer station on Saturday, considering any extra hours on Sunday this week for that? Or not?
I think we are.
No, okay, where's the posting for that gonna be?
It's on the gate, it's on the, by the shed.
I saw it when I went to the dump on Sunday.
And will there, will there be a town announcement? Announcement page?
Yeah, I believe, did we already put that up on the website?
We're, uh, already, it's gonna be up.
Okay, if you could take care of that in the morning.
Yep.
Any other questions on the manager's update? None? Solid waste fee assessment policy.
Due to the hour again, I suggest you shorten this up a whole lot.
Yeah.
Um, there, I just skimmed through, there's like sixteen hundred and fifty people that have their names on there associated. But I've found, I've found some people that should be, um, zero that are being charged fifty dollars, not just me. So.
I don't mean to laugh, but it is, it is really long, but it is exactly what you asked for.
No, it's not. What I asked for was to see the forty, which you, which you said, there were about forty people that are exempt from the fifty dollar policy. So the easy thing to do is pick out those forty.
They're on here.
Huh?
They're on here.
Yeah, but you gotta, but you gotta pick out those forty and see whether or not their tax cards, which are located in the Lister's office, have no buildings on them or how they are excluded from the fifty dollar fee. So. I can tell you right now that my, my daughter and my son-in-law bought a piece of property right next to them, it's contiguous. Doesn't have any buildings on it, they're charged a fifty dollars. And, and according to the policy that's implanted right now.
Yep.
They should not be charged a fifty dollars. So who determines, you told me earlier that the Listers do all this. I find that incredible because they, they don't make those decisions. They, they just provide the tax cards and whatnot. They don't say who gets the fifty dollar bill or not.
Um, what's, your daughter and son-in-law is, it's Brusso.
Yep.
Um, I just wanna look at the property really quick.
Yep, so if you look at the ID, I, my screen's off, I don't have to look at it, I looked at it before. They're, they're charged, they got two, they got two ID numbers on there. One's right, one's got the house and one's right next door, they bought it from Jeff Eaton, it's land, it's.
It's land only.
Yeah.
Um.
I see why it's under two different names.
That could be the reason.
They dropped the A off for Christmas.
I was gonna say that.
I just happened to pick that.
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm serious, that could actually trigger it.
I'm just, yeah, but I don't think that, I don't think that, I don't think that a computer does this. I think it's, they just bought the land a year or two ago, I bet they don't know that they could have got that excluded. Um, I'd just like to see, you mentioned that there were forty parcels, I'm, I'm saying you, Brandon, that there were forty parcels that were exempt. Okay, I just wanted to see what those were and lock them in to why they were excluded from the fifty dollar fee.
So these are all the ones that have, these are all the parcels in town.
Yeah.
That have a fee or don't have a fee.
Right.
Um, and you're right, according to the page three, excuse me, page page six. There is Ira and Kristen Brusso.
But, but I don't know that they're the only ones, I just happened to scan down through there because I found that that list that you gave us were in alphabetical order and I just down, okay, hey, look.
I found another one.
Yeah, I know. So I'm just saying that I don't know that this is, I don't know that the reason why people are exempt or not exempt is accurate according to the policy, that's all I'm trying to say, I don't know.
And the Listers, the Listers did do this before.
They established whether or not you get a fifty dollar fee?
Yeah.
Based on the policy that the select board. Yeah.
But what triggered, what triggers review by then?
What about subdivisions, I mean, you know, when it goes through the planning boards and then you have a vacant piece of land and you happen to own it and it's.
Dave, I, I, I know for me, when I went through it, it was the, uh, it was the purchase of that lower lot where my house is now. And, and then, and then at, when I did that, uh, uh, the upper lot was, was in Tara's name. I bought the lower lot, was in my name, so they were separate and they had separate tax bills. But then the planning commission told me to join them together so I could get my permit to try to put my business down where my house is. We joined them together and it, it went through, uh, the Lister's office and they, they joined them and put that as one property so that there was, that I didn't have any, anything else happening down there.
That's for taxable purposes, so you have one.
Yeah.
I have that at my house, I have two deeds.
Yeah, that's really not the same thing as this. So how, how does the review get triggered for the, for the assessment?
So when did Ira and Kristen purchase that land?
Year or two ago.
So I, who did they purchase it from?
Jeff Eaton.
Is he a resident in town with a piece of property?
Owns a neighbor right, right there, yeah.
I see.
They're all.
So I think something.
Perkinsville, when you go around the corner.
Okay. Let me.
I just use that for one example, that's all. So, and, you know, another one could be the properties that are down in the Weathersfield Bow, I mean, we just had to deal with Jay Stevens or whatever. And I get it where you're now saying that it's, okay, it's not, it's not the name and the name means everything. And I'm saying, wait a minute, that's not the way it used to be. I, I remember, I remember listening to other reasons why it was. And the primary reason was property that has no building, no nothing, no water, no septic, no reason, doesn't generate any waste.
I totally agree with that.
I, I, as do I, and, and I, and I was only making that statement on the, the name thing because it, it's there, but I don't think that's the reason at all, that that's what's happening.
So any of the, any of the properties that have a zero dollar fee on this document don't get charged the solid waste fee for that property?
And you know, quite frankly, maybe they should, maybe they've changed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's going the other way.
Maybe somebody has put a hat, well, there is now, there's, there's two on my road right now that are gonna trigger a change because they were vacant lots and they're both getting houses put on them right now.
And, but that should come through, that should come through the Lister's office, from zoning to the Listers.
Yes, or, correct, that's right, the zoning permit would trigger a change, yes.
So what do people do who have a piece of property that should be zero? Do they come in, how do they get that rectified?
So, now that I'm aware of this piece of property, we're gonna reimburse Chris, uh, Ira and Kristen.
So the other people that have asked me about it just need to come and see you?
Yeah, absolutely, and we'll reverse it, if they can prove that they own a parcel of land that they're currently being charged for. And this is one of the issues of not having a fully staffed Lister's office.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Are you gonna put a limit on the reimbursement, like go back five years, ten years?
Oh, I don't think these people would care, I just think they wanna make it so they don't.
Well, that's gonna happen, that is going to happen. He's not wrong.
How many years have you been doing this to me?
Wait a minute, I've been here six hundred years.
So now that you, now that you, and it's getting, it's getting really late, so, um, I wanna move to warrants. But now that you opened the door to that question, suppose somebody did say that they'd like to be a Lister. Somebody's, which they did before.
Yep.
Is they gonna be, I fully support that because of the reappraisal that's coming up or it's gonna happen. So, but there's no money in the budget for that.
We're reviewing the budget, um, for FY twenty-five, um, and we'll be presenting that on the twentieth.
My, my screen is out, can we go to warrants?
Well, one, just one quick, uh, question or suggestion. Um, when we do the tax bills this year, can we put a note in with the tax bills when they go out? It seems that we're talking about the assessment and the assessment goes out with the tax bills. Can we put a little note in there that says, li- listen, explain the policy, explain the property thing and just put a note in there for people to get, so maybe some people will come in. The, the people that are gonna owe for one probably are not gonna come in, but the people that, 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 that are being charged for one that they shouldn't be charged for may at least be notified.
You could do that right on the town website. Um, but, but you've gotta be a little careful because how much time do you want them to get bogged down in? Whether, that's why you gotta know, you, you'd kinda like to know what, out of the sixteen fifty, what you're talking about. You'd like to measure something about what the possibilities might be or not.
So would you have the Lister take a look at this stuff and start from there?
Yeah, I can assign the Lister this job. Um, what it's gonna require is going.
Land records.
From land record to land record and looking at people who own multiple pieces of property and determining if they're charged a solid waste fee or if they're not.
Correct.
Um, so it's, it's gonna be time consuming.
Well, if you went down the list that you just got assembled, then you could, somebody could write a pen right there, check. Because you're only looking for the ones that you wanna look multiple, the names. So, so you don't, you wouldn't look almost every one of them, you don't.
That's a good point.
But some of those zeros might need to be fifties though, too.
Yeah.
I noticed some of those zeros need to be fifty.
And that's correct, and that's what should be done in the office, so, so it's fair and.
Yeah.
I think you're right, I think you're gonna find that there's gonna be some ads, they shouldn't be on there, yes, I think so.
Yep, oh, I agree, okay, where are we at, what's next? Um, appointments, do we have any appointments? Yes, Bruce Cox, somebody make a motion to appoint Bruce Cox, Bruce Cox to the Conservation Commission?
I'll make a motion, that motion to.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, that takes care of that, the zoning board would adjust, uh, approve the warrant.
Are you, are you just gonna pass again on the wastewater?
Um, we haven't committed, we haven't created the policy yet.
No, the committee?
Yes, I understand.
We can't, don't have a committee yet.
You don't have the committee, you don't have the policy yet.
Can't tell you how policy.
You can't?
That's been the recommendation, is not to create the committee until you have the policy to guide them. Um, so.
I thought you were gonna do it, because you did it last time. No, my screen's all off, it says no message.
Kelly did such a good job.
I make a motion that we approve the warrant dated November sixth, two thousand twenty-three. General fund payroll, twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and eighty-six cents. General fund operating expenses, fifty-seven thousand five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Highway fund payroll, fourteen thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Highway fund operating expense, twenty-nine thousand one oh eight eighty-seven. Solid waste fund payroll, two thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Solid waste operating expense, thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents. Library payroll, three thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, let's see, remove from the reserve funds that covered, which covered bridge? Upper Falls?
Upper Falls.
Upper Falls, twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, what is special revenue?
I believe that's a grant. Uh, let me take a peek.
Anyway, ARPA funds for roofing, what was that one, do you know the project on that one?
Uh, that's the West Weathersfield Fire Department roof project.
Uh, operating cost at forty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Do we have a definition of whatever the special revenue was? Is it revenue or is it a special expense?
So this is, um, wastewater feasibility study, thirty-seven fifty-three, St. Pierre Highway.
No, for, for, for sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars?
Yep.
Oh, oh, you have a breakdown?
Yeah, that, if you go to page, uh, one eleven of your packet, it'll break down the special revenue, uh, special, special expense.
So, right, so why are we, why are we calling that a revenue when it, when it's designated here as an operating expense of the warrant?
Because that's a, uh, a grant.
So.
The revenue's a grant.
So the, the money comes in and then it comes in from another. So the, the money comes in and then it comes in from another source. It doesn't come in through the town of Weathersfield, so you have money that's coming in from the state.
But, but is this mislabeled? Should it, should it not say, you know, special article warrant expense? I mean, why is it say revenue? Because revenue would be add, not a subtract.
This is definitely a subtract. Um, from, sorry, I'm a little tired.
Yeah, no, I know, but so, so, so you, so you, I just wanna get it right. Um, you just added two things and that totals up to be sixteen four eighty-two?
It's a special revenue account.
No, 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 but you, you gave me two, uh.
Oh, okay, Hammond Engineering for the Lotterie, Lottery Lane Construction Project. Monus Gottenia Regional for the Burke Grant, that's the local hazard mitigation, uh, plan that we're creating.
Okay.
Six eighty-three. The wastewater feasibility study thirty-seven fifty-three. Saint Pierre Highway Gravel, forty-one twenty. And then Golden Ridge Ledge.
The way they count it, it's set up, it's all in a revenue, it's considered real.
Those are really different projects, though. That's a little crazy. So the next one, you wanna have those down here as subtitles, will you?
Okay.
I mean, it just doesn't seem right that you blocked those all off. I mean, the, I mean, you're going from Everett Hammond, they did the lottery. That's been done for a year.
The money comes out of one account, to pay for all that.
It's a, it's broken down on page one eleven, so it's for the, for the purpose of the cover page, it's just the.
Anyway, for a grand total of payroll of forty-five thousand nine eighty-five fifty-eight and a grand total of expenses, operating expenses of two hundred fifteen thousand four thirty-four twenty-two.
I hear a second.
Our second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the warrants. Any discussion on the warrants? No discussion on the warrants?
No.
Uh, hearing none. All in favor of approving the motion, approve the warrants, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, uh, and, uh, we, one board member has, had, has been called out, had to leave. Um. Uh, so it's, it's, uh, unanimous of the four remaining members. Any other business? It can be legally conducted well with the board is assembled? None? Future agenda items, anything, anybody, we, we have a carryover um, for eleven twenty. Healthcare, opt-out, current, uh, current employees or possible cap and change. Uh, that was a discussion I've had with him and he's, he's got.
You're gonna put, I just don't wanna lose it for the next meeting or after.
Yeah, opt-out discussion.
So the new, newer employees, uh, we talked about that like a year ago and that was talked about at the last meeting.
Yes.
Nothing to do with it ne- today with existing, but I don't know what that requires, whether it's a I don't know what's, I don't know what's written down in the.
It's a deg- future agenda item.
And the solid waste fee assessment policy discussion, I will be assigning that to Barb. Um, and I think I'll be
Yep.
Just delegating that project to her. Okay.
Well, I think it, it's a Lister job and
Yeah.
we only have one, so, at this point. Um, any other future agenda items anybody's, needs to point out right now? We still have the, the, um, carryover of the, uh, um, the policy.
We'll probably keep Fiona on here. I think updates are good. Keep you guys posted if you want.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna be coming in here with Steve Hyer soon.
Yes.
Uh, within the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
Do you have, um, do you, I mean, we floated and I'm glad that Bill came forward on that, on the cruisers thing. And, and we've kind of jokingly floated the ARPA name around. But it seems like maybe one or two things may be at least starting to surface where it may be better to reallocate whatever the list was or, or think about it. Because that's, if it's gonna be inserted into the budget implications, you guys start thinking about that.
And we have to, we have to determine how to spend it by the end of next year.
Well, remember now when
We will.
we've been, no, but re- but remember, they're, they're to be used for, they're to be used for purchases. So they can't be put in a reserve account and they can't be used for other, other things, so I'm, I'm just throwing that out.
We'll use it to, to create a job that creates a future expense or, or, or purchase it. Drives a future expense even.
So you can put it in a reserve account, but you just, you have to pay you have to pay for expenses in your budget.
Now.
And then take the surplus from that and transfer it to reserve.
Is, so, a while ago, you guys, I kinda volunteered to do this to to, to be the, whatever the person that talks about the school.
The liaison for the school.
But, so I have not, I have not even acknowledged that I was that with the school. Is there anything? If there's anything, I think we should talk about, uh, doing anything, if, if anything with the school. The only thing that I see them raising would be the issue of reappraisal and I don't have enough facts to be telling them exactly what, what they probably wanna hear. No, other than, other than we've hired somebody to do it, but they're gonna say okay, when is that? And I'm gonna say, I don't know. They'll think, they'll say, okay, how do, how come you don't know? So, so that if there's anything else that anybody's thinking about, whatever the connection to the school, to the town would be think about it or don't think about it or whatever. I know there's a Thanksgiving dinner over there at the fifteenth that is kind of a blast. I'm sure you'll get notified of it, because
I've got that on the calendar.
I go every year.
On the fifteenth?
I took you last year.
Yeah.
It's Wednesday.
Like an invitation again.
It's a very, very good for everybody here, even if you don't have children or anything, it's a blast. Because you don't even talk about politics, you talk about nothing. You get to sit in a really nice room and have a turkey meal.
It is really cool.
It's a blast.
Where, when is that day?
Little kids at the school on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of November?
Yep, come out.
Next week, next Wednesday.
Yes, and you get your choice of three sittings.
Brandon, go home.
Yep.
We got a meeting tomorrow.
I'll make a motion that we
We have a meeting?
we adjourn the meeting for the night.
You're a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Fee barrager.
Ten o'clock?